One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Filippo. It's always a pleasure to see you. May I have the roll call please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Duryo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Fellshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel. And Councilmember Neil absent.
Thank you. Today I have one recognition and two presentations and keeping in the spirit of what we've done for the month, recognizing Black History Month. I'm going to recognize our Black History recipient. Whereas this month, we celebrate Black History Month honoring Councilmember Odwin Samuel. The longest-serving councilman on the city of Beaumont Council. Whereas in nineteen eighty-three, Councilman Samuel was elected to serve, the constituents of Beaumont wore three and did so from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen ninety-nine. And has continued to serve for the last twenty-four years totaling over thirty-five years of service and counting. Whereas Councilman Samuel has served as Beaumont City Council Mayor Pro Tem in years nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand five, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and most recently twenty twenty-one. Whereas Odwin Samuel began his career at Berkenstein and Oxford PC as a law clerk from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-four. And is now the principal attorney at the Law Office of Odwin Samuel from nineteen ninety-four to present. Whereas Councilman Samuel has served nationally on the National League of City Board of Directors, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Vice President of the Public Safety Committee, Chairman of the Program Committee, Vice Chairman of the Program Committee, Intergovernmental Relations Committee, National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials as the President and Vice President and is currently on the Board of Directors. Councilman Samuel also served on the state level on the Texas Municipal League Policy Committee, Policy Advisory Committee, Texas Association of Black City Council Members and Texas Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials founding members. Locally, Councilman Samuel serves on the city of Beaumont and commit committees he is fond of, members of the one hundred black men of Beaumont, of greater Beaumont, and a founding member of the Black Adoption Council. Now therefore, I, Robin Muton, Mayor of the city of Beaumont, do hereby recognize on this twenty-third day of February twenty twenty-three, Councilman Odwin Samuel as a trailblazer of Beaumont who has exemplified great leadership and continues to be an inspiration to this community. Accordingly, I Mayor Robin Muton set the seal in my hand affixed. The city of Beaumont signed this day, February twenty-first. Signed Mayor Robin Muton. Everyone, he was not aware of this, so it caught him by surprise.
Thank you Mayor. Uh, thank you Council. I love Beaumont. This is, this community has been good to me. And all I try to do is make it a better place to live. I thank God for giving me the opportunity because it very well could have been someone else. So for all this, I just say thank you and to God be the glory. Thank you.
Councilman Samuel, thank you for all of the work that you have done. I've served with you on several of those committees. I know the work that you've put in. I know the money that you've brought to Beaumont behind some of those programs and committees that you're on. So for myself, I say thank you. We appreciate your work.
Most importantly, I'm sorry Mayor, uh, kind of got me caught. I thank all the citizens of Beaumont. Uh, those who voted for me, those who didn't but supported me anyway. I appreciate it. I don't take any votes for granted or any persons for granted. As I've gone through this over the years, uh, this is not my seat. This is the people's seat. I will continue to try to do what I believe is in the best interest of the people. I applaud those who put themselves in a position to run. My opponents, uh, Carlton, Sharp, Gary, Senegal, or anybody else. This is not my seat. This is the people's seat. And that's the way I've always served. I don't do what necessarily might be the popular thing, but I try to take everything that's presented to us, evaluate it, and make a decision. I've made good decisions. I made some bad decisions. But I'm man enough to stand up for whatever position I take and I try to justify it. So I thank each one of you for being here. Thank you for your concern about our city. Because if you're here, you have to have a concern about the city. So I appreciate it. And I say thank you. And thank each one of you on council.
Thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation of the purchase exchange lease or value of real property in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-two of the government code to wit specifically land owned by the city of Beaumont at seven-zero-one dash five-five-five Main Beaumont Jefferson County, Texas. And specifically a portion of the north end of Amarillo Street, the neighboring alleyway in block thirty-two Cartwright Trace and an adjoining portion of Forsyte Street, Beaumont Jefferson County, Texas. Thank you. At this time, we will have our first presentation on the results of the water and sewer revenue bond sale. Mr. Robert Trailer with RBC, if you'll please come forward and begin your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Muton, members of council. Dusty Trailer with RBC Capital Markets. Uh, it is our firm's honor and privilege to represent the city of Beaumont as financial advisor. And it's always a joy for me to be over in Beaumont. The, the presentation before you, I'm just going to kind of focus a little bit on the highlights of the sale of our, of the city's utility system revenue bonds. The sale was completed. If we could go to the, the next page. I've got a summary on this page of the, of the transaction highlights. The council actually gave approval to proceed with this transaction at, at your meeting in either late November, early December. We were in the, we've since that time been working closely with your executive leadership team here at the city, working to prepare a preliminary official statement. That's the securities offering document that's utilized in the sale of the bonds. Uh, and we've also, uh, your team has led rating agency discussions in anticipation of the sale of the bonds. And ultimately, we're able to have all the, everything ready to go into the market to sell on February the second. That was our sale date. The money will be deposited into the city's account on February twenty-eighth. The city's bond attorneys are currently working the transaction through the Texas Attorney General's Office for their approval. Once the AG has completed its review and approval, uh, will close and the money will be deposited into the city's bank account on February twenty-eighth. The, I think the, the biggest thing to, to discuss here on the transaction is the interest rates. We had a federal arbitrage yield on the bonds of a three-point-six-one percent. And the all-in TIC, that's the all-in interest rate. When you consider the, not only the interest rate on the bonds, the cost to issue the bonds, call feature, et cetera, is a three-point-nine-seven percent. So just under a four percent interest rate. I was talking with, I was talking with Todd, I was talking to Mr. Williams and your team about the significance of that. At the time that we were comprehending moving forward with this transaction, we were looking at interest rates that probably would have pushed our all-in TIC north of four and a half percent. So us being able to sell these bonds at an interest rate lower than four percent actually will translate into lower annual debt service costs for the city for this transaction of less than a hundred, of more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. So our, our debt service will be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year less due to this interest rate than it would have been under our pro forma interest rates. The, the transaction team is comprised of ourselves, RBC Capital Markets is financial advisor, Holland and Knight, uh, it's Derek Mitchell's team, uh, is your bond counsel. Uh, the underwriters counsel is Creighton Fox, Johnson Mills, along with Weston Associates. The senior manager is Stradahina Hosa with the co-managers of Raymond James and Samco Capital Markets. That's the underwriting team that actually sold the bonds. Then your paying agent is UMB Bank. And then to the right on that presentation, that's just the front cover of that preliminary official statement offering document I discussed earlier. Uh, next page, we'll discuss the sources and uses of the transaction. You'll notice that we are going to deliver project fund proceeds to the city of twenty-five million dollars. But the actual stated par value or principal amount of these bonds is a twenty-three-point-three million dollar par amount. The differential there is made up by a premium paid by the investors, uh, in these bonds. So able to deposit that full twenty-five million that you guys authorized back in late November, early December. And then next page. And then here, we just show an all-in debt service page, uh, summarizing the debt service. This is of the city's utility system. And in the middle there is our debt service on this particular issue. You'll notice we're going to make a small payment in this current fiscal year that was bud, previously budgeted for. And then, uh, your annual debt service costs were about one-point-six-one-three million dollars per year. Actually, stand corrected, Todd, I believe that when we were, we were looking at this, those annual debt service costs for this transaction were slightly north of one-point-eight million dollars per year, not one-point-six. So we're close to two-hundred thousand dollars per year in annual debt service savings as a, as a result of the lower interest rates. And you may or may not be aware, just since the time that we sold these bonds, we sold these bonds on February second. So now we're sitting here on the, the twenty-first. Uh, our interest rates would not be today what they would have been then. Interest rates have actually risen quite a bit in that timeframe and that would have translated into higher annual debt service, uh, costs. So I applaud the city, uh, for its professionalism and preparation to getting this transaction ready and packaged and being able to get into the market, uh, in a very timely manner. And then here, you can see several graphs. I'll be honest with you guys, I'm colorblind, so. What I'll, what I will, what I will tell you is, uh, if you will look at the, the black line in the, kind of in the middle of that graph, that's, this is the MMD. These are the, the yield curve off of which municipal bonds are priced off every day. Any underwriting desk in the country, when they're going to price municipal bonds, they key that pricing off of the MMD. The black line there is the fifteen-year historical average MMD. The, uh, the blue line at the top there is where we were November one of twenty twenty-two. That was about the high interest rate mark of what we've seen since rates started going up at the beginning of twenty twenty-two. On February the second, twenty twenty-two, here's our MMD here, kind of in that yellow gold color at the very bottom. Uh, and then you'll notice the green line there. That's where we would have been, uh, at the middle part of last week. So even just the middle part of last week, you can see that rates have, have already crept up some from where they were on our sale date. So again, applaud the city on its timing, being able to lock in these interest rates. And that really concludes my formal presentation regarding the sale. Again, your team did a fantastic job, uh, and we're, we're pleased with the results here for the city. So any questions that y'all have for me, I'm happy to provide any comments.
I would just like for you to just clarify the savings, um, by, by doing this from February second.
Yes ma'am.
Until today.
So when we were looking at, when we were looking at selling these bonds, uh, the MMD, we were looking at pricing the bonds up right around November one. So when we were preparing our preliminary estimates, uh, we would have estimated that interest rates probably would have been fifty to seventy-five basis points or one-half of one percent to three-quarters of one percent higher than where we actually achieved. That translates into an average of approximately two-hundred thousand dollars per year in lower debt service on this transaction. Our interest costs would have been about two-hundred thousand dollars per year higher than they, than they were when we locked it in February second.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions?
Just say thank you for what you've done.
Yeah, thank you and tell our staff, thank you so very much.
Thank, thank you all. It's again, always, always good, always a treat for me to get over here and see everybody in Beaumont. So again, congratulations and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job Todd.
We have a second presentation, but before I call, uh, the presenter forward, I would like to recognize former, uh, councilmember Claude Gudros. Thank you for being here. So our second presentation is on the awarding and installation of a turf field at Sprott Park. Uh, with Mr. Ty Seibert with Artificial Grass Recyclers. Please come forward.
All right, so, um, really first off, thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be able to let your city know about something that we've been talking about for a minute here. Um, so I wanted to take you through a little bit of background on kind of how we got here and, and, um, a little bit about us. So our company is actually originally created from, in twenty-twelve by our, uh, it's a private company by our honor Dylan Georgian. Um, over the, over the years, right? So over the last eleven, twelve years now, he has been able to grow from a one-spot retail lot to now having four different companies. Uh, distribution, retail, uh, repurposing, which is where my company comes in. And then, um, also doing turf installations. So originally based out of Temecula, California, we now have distribution units in Texas and in Florida, um, as well as obviously in Nevada too as well. So it's a little bit, just so you all understand like how we all work together and how our companies work together. So for the first part, for, uh, my side of the company, so that is Artificial Grass Recyclers. Um, we're going to be donating, uh, sports turf, uh, specifically to Sprott Park. Overall, total donation is going to be probably around eighty to a hundred thousand square feet of, um, sports turf. When you look at the basis of AGR back in twenty-twelve, which was the second side of the company that really got started for us, what we do is we repurpose turf. So when you think about all of those turf fields that you see on TV, all of those turf fields that you see at colleges, universities, professional franchises, everything else, those fields have to be able to come up every two to four years. In some cases, back in the day, it was about eight to ten years. Now it seems like there's more funds flowing and fields are moving more quickly. And the, uh, before we actually came along, the problem was, is you would take these fields and there, there was only one place you could take them, and that was to a dump. And when you look at all the turf fields that are out there today, um, whether you're watching TV or whether you're just driving down the street, there's a lot of them. So what we started doing in twenty-twelve was taking these fields and repurposing. Now primarily, we'd repurpose and we'd resell them to homeowners and business owners. Um, and that kind of leads us into what we'll talk about here a little bit shortly. Couple, uh, insights I wanted to be able to talk about with used turf. Most sports fields are removed four to eight years. Average turf life actually is ranging from twelve to twenty years. So even when these fields were getting pulled up and getting thrown away back in the day, uh, they still had a lot of turf life in them. So they still had a lot of opportunity to keep being used. Used sports turfs, again, are taken from local high schools, colleges, professional teams. And then the neat thing about specifically like the product that we're going to be using for Sprott Park, this is a commercial sports turf, high-end backing. This isn't the sort of, uh, turf that a lot of people are going to put in their front yards or backyards. So commercial turf is going to be a much stronger, more durable product for the long term. The second side of this is our sister company, which is Built Right Turf. So they're our installation company. They've been operating in California primarily in twenty-fourteen and now they operate in Nevada and Texas. Uh, same concept, right? Providing homeowners and property owners full solution material installation. So actually either purchasing and installing the turf for them or just doing the installations. Couple highlights for them, they've done over nine thousand successful installations, numerous sports field installations that you can see here, and then also residential and commercial installations. So the good news is, is that we're in very good hands with BRT being able to help out and support us. So the question is, how did we get here and how did I fly down from Dallas this morning to be able to say, what are we doing today, right? So this all started, um, quite frankly, from a, a long partnership and friendship back from nineteen ninety-eight. I don't know who's all familiar with Damon West, um, but he was my, you know him?
Real well.
All right. He's a good guy.
Real good guy.
Um, in nineteen ninety-eight, I went to the University of North Texas and Damon West was in a fraternity. It's called Lamb de Kai out of North Texas. And he ended up being my big brother. When he became my big brother, he taught me a lot about things like this, public speaking and things of that nature. But then if you heard his entire story, you'll know there's a lot more to it. Over time, um, if you haven't had an opportunity, I would highly recommend you go in on Google and, and, uh, Googling his name because you're going to see a really interesting backstory. But in a quick summary, um, Damon made some poor choices, uh, after college and ended up going to prison and had a life sentence basically would have been sixty-five years. Damon and I obviously did not talk a lot when he was in prison, but when he came out of prison, um, after really doing, uh, some impressive just servant leadership, got released, still holds that sentence, but is basically on parole for the rest of his life. Him and I connected a couple times, but nothing really significant. That's the backstory. Day before Thanksgiving, my wife and I are, uh, at a Chili's of all places and we're sitting there having conversation and I was telling her, I really have had this philanthropic just calling, just need, but I don't know what it is. I'm forty-two years old. I've been in all sorts of different businesses and I don't know if I've had the op, I've probably had the opportunity to do something philanthropic, just didn't know how to be able to get it done. So as we were sitting there and we're talking about it, we're having conversation, my wife's in marketing by the way. And she goes, "So you have fields of opportunity and you know the coffee bean. I bet you could probably figure this one out." So when you look at all of our different locations for AGR, we have anywhere from five to ten million square feet of used turf all around the United States, right? Specifically outside of Houston, we have about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. When you can try and do something with all of that turf to people or give it to someone where they, um, could have the opportunity to, to have a turf field that they honestly just don't have that opportunity today, it would be amazing. So I reached out to Damon that afternoon, that evening. And he immediately got back with me and said, "Hey, let's try and figure something out." So I said, "Here's my idea, here's my plan, and it's not really an idea or a plan. I need some help putting it together." After that, he had reached out, uh, to Mayor Muton and started having conversations, I think with probably a couple of you. And really from there, uh, this is kind of what got us here. So ultimately, it's the ability to be able to give back. It's the ability to be able to do something for a community. Personally, I was fairly close to you from the standpoint. Um, I lived in Houston for sixteen years. Um, and then knowing obviously Damon, uh, was from the Port Arthur area. So finding something that was fairly local to both of us, as well as being able to find someone that really fit into our core values and, and the coffee bean message, it just felt like a really good partnership. So, uh, through Damon's follow-up, through his kind of constant communication and then through y'all's communication of getting me in contact with all the people that I needed to hear, including Mr. Williams, Mr. Kent and Mr. Milton in the back, um, who have been phenomenal to be able to work with by the way. That's how we're here. And it's a unique and inspiring opportunity in my opinion. And I'm really looking forward to being able to, uh, to go forward with this. So a couple other things that we have here. So for us, it's going to be the Play Forward Project. I'm not going to read the entire mission and vision statement, but I will give you the overview from the standpoint of working with communities to inspire hope and improve the quality of life, understanding that every child deserves a safe place to play. And our mission is to be able to provide quality fields to places that need them. Better fields gives kids hopes, chase their wildest dreams. Ultimately, we want kids, um, to know that things can and will get better and that's why we've invited every community that we serve to be able to start taking part in this sort of work. A little bit of good can go a long way and together we can create a better life for future generations. And that's our ultimate plan here. So project overview, to give everybody an idea of what this looks like. I gave you a little bit of background on this, but this just kind of, this is from a, insert from, uh, our website. But most artificial turf does come from sports fields, community centers as well. It's sourced specifically, um, from regulation change in playing fields every five to ten years. Like I said, recently, that's gotten pulled up to every two or four years. And this has led to a surplus of artificial, used artificial turf, uh, still in really good condition and available to be able to purchase, which is primarily our main source of, um, uh, business. So what to expect? So those rolls right there are the actual rolls that are going to be out at Sprott Park. I can't tell you where we got the rules, rolls from because of our contract partnerships and trademarks and all sorts of other stuff. I need you to just, um, understand, it's a really good field. Currently, it's being held at our Rockwall location. So we have three corporate locations across the United States. One in Sacramento, one in Peoria, Arizona, and one in Rockwall, Texas, just outside of Dallas. And, um, what really needs to be able to get started for this whole project is first part grading. So the current Sprott Park field, grading it, taking two to four inches of base out of it, coming back over there to be able to level it out, then turn around and, uh, install basically a, a very simple chat is what we call it in the industry, as a two-to-four inch base, which would go under the field. After that, we need two to three weeks to be able to stage. So I know those rolls look nice and packed. In order to store a hundred thousand square feet, we need a lot of space. So we'll really have to be able to bring it in in increments. So basically like one week, we'll have to bring in a certain amount of rolls. Then the next week, we'll have to bring in a certain amount of rolls and so on and so forth. So it is have to be a, a stepped out kind of process here. Next part's going to be the installation, which you think is the hardest part. It's actually probably the easiest part. It's the grading and the staging that's the most difficult. Um, as we begin to be able to do the installation, you're looking for about two to three weeks there and then for final field prep, you're looking at another two to three weeks. So all in, it's going to be right around a twelve-week process. Could be a little short of that. This is our first time replicating this to obviously a community. So we're trying to be able to figure out like, hey, how does it all look and everything else? But when you really look at it, I think, uh, twelve weeks to be able to have a completely repurposed field will be pretty, pretty impressive. Right? Right? Um, the ask, right? So the ask from our team is this would be really unique if we can get youth programs, community partners, anyone wanting to be able to learn and participate in this would be fantastic. Um, as I talked about Damon and his message earlier, it's servant leadership and it's the ability to be able to say, how can we give something back for a community? For the youth group, for whoever wants to be participating in it, to better understand that, hey, people are out here to be able to help. There's another way out and there's a lot of different things that you can do that can be very fulfilling in your life. So even if it was getting Damon to be able to have a coffee bean book and the messaging and have him being able to wrap up at the end of the installation and have that message to, um, to your youth. I think would be very impactful. For us personally, we're having some youth from, uh, the Dallas area who are going to come down and help out and support some of these days on these projects. And then ultimately the other piece is, is if you can even have people out in the job market who are currently curious about landscaping and field installation and what that looks like. They're going to have 12 weeks to be able to have a really good glimpse of it. So any support that anybody would be able to bring, I think would be fantastic. Um, we obviously will have our teams on it. We know that we're also being able to, uh, have some support from y'all. So we're looking forward to it. And I believe that is the last slide that I have. So any questions?
Well, Ty, uh, again, thank you so very much. Um, as you stated, um, conversation between Damon and I, it, it was just on time because prior to Damon calling me, um, and us discussing the turf, the, the previous Tuesday, uh, we were speaking in reference to the youth and our parks and rec and what we could do to upgrade. And you know, you and I have talked on the phone and today was the first day that we physically, we physically met. And so through those conversations, uh, with, uh, Damon, we were discussing how Beaumont was, uh, declared the football capital of the world. And so from that conversation, thanks to our, uh, great staff. I have a sign. And I have the original bumper sticker and I also have the original documentation from Austin, Texas, from Mayor Ken Ritter because Damon Dad was a sportswriter that wrote about all of the athletes from Beaumont that went to the pros. And one in particular was Jerry Levice and I thought I would be able to get him here for Black History Month. But he's traveling the country. And so, uh, when I spoke to Jerry, I told him about, uh, the project. And hopefully we can get him down here because he grew up in that particular area. It was not a park then, but he grew up in the Partridge neighborhood and went on to become the first African-American athlete to not only integrate SMU, but he integrated, uh, the whole Southland Conference, Southwest Conference. And so, uh, I spoke to him on Thursday and he will be in Beaumont, hopefully when we complete this field. Um, and so he's excited about it. I'm excited about bringing football back. And Councilmember Turner and I were speaking, uh, in reference to our youth and what we've produced in this city. And so I, I think we got lax, um, some years, but with, uh, your donation and the relationship between Damon and myself and connecting us with you. And then a meeting with all three of us coming together. I think we can make Beaumont again, the football capital of the world. And I'm looking forward to, uh, going out, getting these volunteers to come out. Because I believe what you put your hands to, you'll protect because you'll have skin in the game. And when our youth can practice every day on a field that they will someday play on, cannot help but cultivate, um, a difference in what they do every day. So Ty, thank you so very much, uh, from myself, from the entire city. And I look forward to getting out there and getting my hands dirty because I'll be out there helping any way that I can. And, um, Damon couldn't be here this morning. Uh, he's out of town, I think, traveling, uh, with the Coffee Bean, uh, project. And so, um, I'm sure he's looking in. But thanks Damon and thanks to you Ty, and we look forward, uh, to start this work. We appreciate it. Councilmember Turner.
I got a question and more so also a statement. Uh, my first statement is I just want to say thank you. Um, I kind of want to get back into the history of how all these conversations started. And it was youth and different programs that was coming to the city of Beaumont and they were literally playing in the middle of parks and different fields with no lines on there, actually having football games on there because they couldn't afford to rent facilities to do these youth programs. So what you guys are doing today is monumental. And I also want to really pat the mayor on the back again because he went above and beyond. And he answered the call to what was a big problem in our community with a solution. One thing that a lot of people don't understand is currently we have four guys in the NFL right here from Beaumont, Texas. They come home, they do football camps free to the entire community. And I like to recognize them. One is PJ Locke. He plays with the Denver Broncos. You got Mike Jack Quick. He's with the Chargers. You got Keith Corbin. He's with the Buffalo Bills and you got Tony Brown. He's also with the Chargers and they're all currently in the NFL from Beaumont. So there's proof in the pudding. As hard as it is to make it, we got those guys in there. And just to Damon, I actually did Dancing with the Stars with Damon. That's when I first met him. Uh, we raised funding and competed and he was a pretty good dancer. And guess who he danced with? Our chair, Zena Stevens. So what a combination, but it all just goes to show that when we keep working together, working with each other to move this community forward, I think we can really move mountains and I can really see some good things that are happening in Beaumont. Thank you for coming down and doing this presentation. Mayor again, thank you. Seriously.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. If, if you haven't met Damon West, I, I recommend that every person meet this, this gentleman. He's one of the most outstanding people I've ever met in my life. He's got a story that you wouldn't believe. I mean, you, you couldn't write this in a movie, his story. But he's a, a genuine person. Matter of fact, he called me this morning. He said, I can't be there today, Kenneth. I'm in Troy, Alabama, work, uh, doing a presentation for a city, but I would like to be there. So before I got off the phone, when I was like, Damon, you need to come and do a story in Beaumont. You need to come and put on an event and tell your story in Beaumont to the public. But two, I just want to say too, that the mayor brought this to me and she says, how can we bring this to the city? And so I said, well, Mayor, let's do a presentation to council. I think it's better if we just bring it to council. Let everybody see it and hear it and that'd be the best way to proceed with it. And, and she was agreeable to that because it's a great story. This is, uh, I mean, this is going to be a real turf foot field in one of our parks, full, full-blown field here. And it's really awesome. You know, we'll, we'll have to, uh, offer some enforced, a little bit of forced labor, I say else, but we're gaining a turf field. So, but I just wanted to, uh, uh, make sure council was aware of it. This great story, this, we thank you for what you're doing and that's Beaumont's really fortunate to get this project.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Durea.
How you doing? I just wanted to say thank you for one, I grew up in that neighborhood. I played at Sprott Park. And number two, it's in my ward, right in the middle of my ward. So we really appreciate it. Thanks very much. Those kids are going to enjoy it. I know they will. And I'll be out there. If the mayor can get her hands dirty, I'm going to get mine dirty too.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, I, I do have, uh, one question, but I want to preface that by saying thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate the presentation and this brings something new to the city of Beaumont. Uh, but as, um, Mr. Williams has stated, what's more important is with Damon and him being able to show, uh, we fall down, but we get up. And that's the key. And so that, uh, is inspiring in and of itself. But I do have a question. Um, once the turf is laid, how difficult is the upkeep of that turf? And, uh, how will we have the, uh, knowledge? Will they train the staff of how to deal with that?
Yeah. So we've actually already had, so Kyle and I came out here two weeks ago and met with Mr. Regat and Mr. Milton back there and walked them through the field maintenance. So when you're looking at artificial turf, um, the great thing about it is, and matter of fact, we were walking back earlier. I said, it's crazy because you look at all this grass out here and just think of all the maintenance that you, that you have, right? When you have artificial turf, you still have maintenance. It's not maintenance-free. So we'll never say that. Um, but ultimately as long as depending, it just depends on how many, uh, football games are played on it or how, however it's used, right? So if they're on there consistently every single weekend from May through the end of summer, probably at the end of summer, you'll want to go through and what do we call raking the field. You basically attach it over to a, um, tractor, pull it through and you would just sweep the field. You've probably seen something similar at a baseball field or something like that. Same concept. What that does is inside of that field, you're going to have infill. It's that black stuff that you see on TV as the guys are slashing around and popping up. That infill basically starts to shift around over time. So as the tractor comes back through, it basically levels it all out. Picks up the turf, makes it look nice and presentable again, and then, uh, do it again. In the off-seasons, you're probably looking at one time every six months.
Well, I look forward to see those little, those big helms and the little people running up and down the turf because, uh, that park is used quite a bit by the football league and they've been doing it for years. So I know the kids are going to love it and they will have an opportunity to play on turf. Uh, those who've participated in sports here in Beaumont long ago, I, I mean, we never had turf to play on. It was always dirt or grass. So, uh, thank you very much for this.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Phil Show.
Thank you, Mayor. I not, I don't believe you addressed this, uh, question. Um, and you may not be able to, you may not have the historical data. But I, I saw the numbers about when you put down new turf and its life expectancy. What about repurposed turf? What, do you have any information on how long we could expect this to last?
Yeah. So, um, for this particular field that y'all are going to be, so y'all are going to be getting in a combination. So we're going to, we're going to have to figure out how to be able to, um, like what that all looks like. But it's basically, and what I can say legally is I can say it's an NCA and a professional field at that. Um, so it'd be really neat for the kids. Immediately when you said it, like just to know that they were playing on something college players played on and professional teams played on. It's pretty cool. Um, so life expectancy for this field, it's been in use for two years. So your life expectancy is still going to be 15 to 18 years more than likely off that. Now, like I was talking to Mr. Regat earlier, it does depend, right? Mr. Turner, if he has everybody going and they're like, hey, we're going to go year-round football, that, that life expectancy changes. What I can almost guarantee you is you're going to be very good for the next five to 10 years, almost 100% guaranteed. Um, it's just how frequently you're actually using the field, the maintenance, all the other things, how all those things kept up. But, um, yeah, I mean, a couple of those pictures, um, that were on the AGR slide, those were from, uh, homeowners who ended up building fields in their backyards. And those were from eight years ago. Still there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Gittes.
Also I'd like to add my thanks to what your gift to the city of Beaumont is and what it will mean to our children. And, uh, as they grow up, I, I know Bob West, uh, who was the sports reporter at the Port Arthur News. I'm from Port Arthur. Remember watching Damon in high school and so, uh, you know, and I know his story well. So, uh, he's a good guy and it doesn't surprise me at all that he is, uh, uh, reaching out to try to make something in his home area prosper and be great. And I, I appreciate y'all's generosity. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, I'll tell you, it's the power of relationships, right? If there's the biggest takeaway for me, it's how strong relationships are in life. And appreciating them and never giving up on them, right? And ultimately being able to reach out when, um, Damon and I hadn't really spoken that much and seeing how quickly he responded to the, to this whole message and how much he jumped into it. And as the mayor knows, it was all about momentum after that. And as, as some of you know Damon very well, and I'm very much like that as well, like, once we're going, we're going. Um, so we just appreciate it. Appreciate all, all of the appreciation on the other side and we look forward to the project getting started. And a lot of community involvement as we were talking about, I think it'd be fantastic for everybody.
And honestly, if it had not been raining so much, you would have already been here, but it wouldn't stop raining.
And I walk that field, so I get it. And I'm, again, technically I know I'm not from Houston, but I believe I'm from Houston because I've been there so long. That's what my kids say too. And, uh, yeah, we get it whenever it rains.
Right.
No worries.
Todd, thank you so very much again, and I look forward to seeing you in the near, near future.
Absolutely. All right, y'all take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, at this time, that does conclude our, uh, recognitions and presentations. Uh, if you're here for the presentations, I will allow you a few minutes if you would like to leave. And if not, we would love to have you to stay. So at this time, now is the time for any citizen who would like to speak on agenda, consent agenda items, one through seven. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes and the red light will come on when your time is up. Thank you.
Claude Gidros, 3365 Briar, Briar Court, Beaumont, Texas, item number five on the agenda.
Well, um, thank you. I'm here today, uh, filled with wonderful memories of the times I spent on council when we were sworn up together, Mayor, Mayor Mouton. And congratulations and continue to serve the city as best you can. I'm really here to prove to Odwin that I can speak less than three minutes. So, so here we go. I basically want to make three quick points. Uh, and it's mostly regarding the tennis facility that we've built and dreamed up for so long. Number one, we started resurfing, surfacing 16 of the courts in 2020 and then COVID came. And then abruptly it stopped and eight have not been surfaced. And we've been waiting on that and kind of wondering where that money went. So we'd like to see that money re-resurrected and finish resurfacing the remaining eight courts. Secondly, we'd like to see installed LED lighting. It's time to go to LED lighting and I estimate, I'll talk to you about the specifics if you want them, but I estimate you'd save about $36,000 a year in electrical bills. If you went to LED lighting and you'd save our poor eyes and the complaints that we get from seasoned veteran tennis players can't see the ball well at night. So LED lighting would be a great improvement and save the city money. Number three, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the entire country. And I congratulate you on resurfacing eight courts that are in double use right now of the 24 courts out there that are being used for pickleball. And they're having regular tournaments and I believe they'll be having outside cities coming in for tournaments shortly. The complex has become a magnet for high schools. And if you want reassurance of that, go on a Thursday or a Friday and you can't hardly find a parking lot. There are buses in there. There are parents coming to see their kids play tennis. It's become a Magnus, magnet from Jasper all the way through a golden triangle for about a 50-mile radius with schools coming to use that complex to play tennis. And they're buying gasoline, they're going to eat, they're going, they're entertaining their kids. And it's a true magnet that you can be proud of. Uh, and also USTA leagues continue to go in the evenings. Go on a Tuesday, Thursday night and see the courts in full use under the lights and Mondays and not as much on Wednesdays, church night. But Lamar Southland Conference has, has found the facility. Not only have they been bringing in the Southland Conference to our cities with all of these rooms that they fill with their players, they've determined it's the best neutral place in the entire, uh, area. So they're coming back. And, uh, the Labor Day classic continues and there are men playing tennis. And I'm just going to read this little card here from one of them. We have a man from Kuwait that moved here to teach commerce at Lamar. He doesn't want to go back. He doesn't want to leave. He was in Kuwait for 10 years. He said, it's the best facility. He loves playing here. And Marty Bradley, who's a, an attorney who deals in, in international law, reluctantly just took a, a place in Taipei to go and re-review their legal documents. reluctantly just took a, a place in Taipei to go and review their legal documents for two years. He just sent us this card, and I'm going to end with this. He said, wow, amazing. Thank you. Thank you to the By Beaumont Tennis Family for including me in the community, the best tennis center in the world. I'll leave this with Mike, and he can pass it out to you. You've done a good job. Let's keep it up, and thanks for service. And by the way, build Mike's dog park, please.
Thank you, Claude. Thank you, Claude. I, I just want to say one thing about what you said at the end about Lamar. They were out there yesterday playing a match with Southern Mississippi. And I encourage our citizens to go out and watch Lamar men and women's team compete. It's free. And you're going to see top-rate tennis. It, it's, I mean, the way, the way these guys and gals hit the ball and how hard it is, and it's, it's just, you know, it's not professional, but boy, it's really good tennis. And so, yeah, we need to do as much as we can to maintain the momentum at that tennis facility.
Thank you, Councilmember Gitts, and thank you, former Councilmember Giddros.
Kenny Ba, I think that's Ba, nine Greenway Plaza, Houston, Texas, item number six on the agenda.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Staff. I am here again, just coming to speak on behalf of Abiding Grace. I'm here representing the developer, ITEX, along with our President and CEO, Chris Agberry. Again, we're in partnership with Jehovah Jireh. Ms. Felicia Young is here representing them. We just ask again for your support on this project. We feel it will be a, a great project for the Parahortus. It will complete that third project over in the area. And we're just really looking forward to completing this one and providing, again, more multifamily, further, further community there. So we just, again, ask for your support, and I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have on the project.
Thank you.
Danielle Sutton, fifty-one forty, Rosemary Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number five on the agenda.
Good afternoon. I've never done this before, and I'm very anxious, so forgive me if I stumble over my words. I'm a much better writer than a speaker. And I'm here kind of on behalf of a lot of families in the community, and we love that you are funding the parks and you have a heart for the youth of the community, for families and wanting to keep them rooted here and better the quality of life. I wanted to, most of my, what I want to say are questions. So I don't know if they need to be on an agenda or anything like that, but I like to ask questions rather than assume and not know what's going on. So I'd like to know if there is like a committee or a group of, if it's just the city council that is doing, meeting to talk about the works of what they have planned for the parks, what proposals y'all have for the parks, the different funding, where you, where it should be allocated and all where it should go. Will there be town hall meetings or forums, surveys? I'd love to see more, maybe even just being in the libraries, having more translations for people of different languages and cultures to be able to communicate what they're looking for in the city they live in. I know personally, my kids are in winter break, and they got to go have ice cream with their dad today. So I finally got to come to my first city council meeting, but this is not a norm for me. And I know there's plenty of families that don't get to make it here either to have their voices heard. So that's another way that would be really helpful, just opening it up to the public more, being accessible. And then if there's anyone working on grants for additional funding. And overall, just in general, I'm a community volunteer, and if there's a way I can help my community, I want to be there. So just to offer and let you know, you have extra hands and feet right here. If you ever need it, feel free to call at me. I do help with a group on Facebook that has over 5,000 moms, and we reach a lot of people in the community. We started a website to meet needs and to just give basic information. If people don't know that Beaumont has two free pools for residents and all the many things that amenities that we have here and things that we can count on. And then how we can better that and gain that potential and root people, connect them here and keep them here, and help them to thrive, not just survive in Beaumont. So I think that's all that I have.
Thank you.
But if there's more questions, feel free to ask me anytime.
Thank you.
Adam Horton, thirty-five fifty-four, South Culpeper Circle, Springfield, Missouri. Item number seven on the agenda.
Good afternoon. My name's Adam Horton with Trinity Housing Development. I think most of you have interacted with Michael Fogel over the past few years. His wife decided to have their baby a little early last night, so they had their baby at nine-thirty. But we are here, kind of the pinch hitters, myself and two of the ownership group here, and we just are requesting support for our project. Here in Beaumont, we recently completed Beaumont Trails over in Spindletop, which was a sixty-unit senior housing project. We know there are two projects here requesting support, and we would encourage the city to support both of those projects. Both are good projects. Both are good developers. TDHCA can sort that out through their scoring system. But we would be honored to receive the resolution of support, happy to answer any questions regarding the project. I know it's a competitive process, and you guys have evaluated both of those, but we just request a, a resolution for our project and the other project as well, and happy to answer any questions about our project now or during the agenda part as well, so.
Well, thank you so very much. And the nerve of her to go into labor last night.
I know.
Tell them we said congratulations.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? No other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for the film-friendly certified community program. The application is of no cost to the city. Prior meeting, you heard a presentation on the film-friendly program from the state of Texas. Today, we'll be applying for, going forward, applying for certification with city councils, consideration of this resolution. This resolution will help, won't help. It will provide guidelines for the program out there and also establish fees for the program. So we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one for the film-friendly certification. May I have a motion, please?
So move to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Phil Show.
Mr. Williams, I want to thank you for bringing something different, something new, and utilizing staff to get this done. I think that's one of the good things about your experience and some of the things you brought to the table. You were actually able to bring things that were successful from where you were from to this area to help us be more successful in it. And with this, it could probably help tourism and other things and bring more revenue to the city of Beaumont. So I want to say thank you for that. And secondly, once these three steps are done, like what's the next step and kind of what is the timeline? Like, once these three steps are done?
Miles addressed it. I could, but I, Miles, it's itching to say.
Thank you, staff.
All right, definitely. So our next step after this is to be with the Visitors Bureau so we could have like a point of contact. And so essentially, if somebody's reaching out for doing a film in Beaumont, once we become certified, then they have a point of contact, and we'll develop like a permit sheet and say, you know, what kind of forms to fill out, assurances to have, and things like that. So the step one is just you granting us access to apply for it. And once we become certified, we have in-house process that we'll complete.
And we'll be registered with the state, so whenever someone comes to the state to do a film, well, they'll see Beaumont on their list of cities that are film-friendly and provide incentives for them to come and do films in their community.
Thank you, Mayor. That answers my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Show.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate the city management, the staff, and all their hard work, and I do support the project. This is for the city attorney. I know that under guidelines for filming, item number ten, certificate of insurance. For the sake of our citizens, could the city attorney just speak to the exposure that we might, would have with this coming into the city? Because I understand that there is some coverage there, but I know some citizens will be questioning, what kind of exposure do we have?
In terms of liability, none. So anytime someone does anything on our property, we require them to list us as an additional insured and identify the city. So we're covered.
And I think it's up to a million? Is that what I?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Your partner, Durya.
Yes, on the certification part, this process, is this, is this something that's going to happen? Or is it a reason that they might not want to certify us?
I haven't known any cities to get turned down, as long as you comply with the guidelines that they're requesting with the resolution, which means that your, the city council supports it and asking for it, and then you provide the guidelines, fee schedule, and things like that. And the state of Texas has encouraged this in the past in their economic development office. And they're quite, they're really looking for cities to participate in the program.
Have they already started taking pictures of locations?
Yeah, we, we have pictures of all locations.
What are, what are the locations? Are they here?
They're in the back. I'll grab it.
I think I did see. Nature's River, Downtown, Terrill Park.
Yeah, those are added to a directory, and so we can always add as time goes on, but that's just a preliminary list we give them. Obviously, Riverfront Park is going to take a while before it comes online, but things like that is what we can add in the future, so.
Add our new turf football field.
Things like that. We, we can always add more, so these are just the minimum that they ask us to sit there.
I'd just like to thank Miles and his staff for this.
Well, again, Mr. Williams, thank you so very much again for bringing something so different for this area. But right after this was announced at the city council meeting, I was contacted by someone that is interested in doing a movie in this area about someone from this area. So it was almost like perfect timing. So thank you so very much, and you will hear more about it in the near future.
Thank the council.
Thank you, and staff, and Miles.
All right.
So all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Preferred Facilities Group, USA, to replace the hot and chill water pipes located between the Beaumont Public Library and the Police Department. As you know, we've had some issues with the chill, hot and chill water pipes under there that, that serves the library and the Julie Rogers Theater. So today, we have a bid in a total amount of seven, seventy-two, three fifty-six. And we have Keith Folsom here to address any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just to kind of give you a background of what this is entailing, the original design, our plant's at PD, which we get our chill water and our hot water, which supplies PD, Main Library, and just chill water to Julie Rogers. It did at one time supply hot water, but I think something happened along the way, and they abandoned that line, provided a boiler at that location. Probably about two years ago, we developed a bad leak on the hot water piping to the Main Library. Never surfaced. We don't know exactly where it was leaking at, but we were losing water and we couldn't keep up. So we cut that off, and basically, the library's been without heat. So I've been working on this. We went out for bid, canceled that bid, regrouped, went for another bid. We've had a little interest in the two times we tried to bid it. And then it's, probably within the last week and a half, I now developed a leak on my chill water at PD, which we're working on that currently, hopefully to have that repaired tomorrow so I can get chill water back on the Main Library and Julie. So it's compounding, and this, this project would be to replace the two chill water and the two hot water between Main Library and PD, which should give us probably another fifty years of life or more by doing that. It doesn't address the line from Main Library to Julie, but I'm not having any problems on that so far. But if we don't do this project and get it moving, then we're probably going to be looking at some portable chillers to provide for the Julie and the Main Library. And that's still not out of the woods just yet. As long as my repair goes good tomorrow, then I'll be in good shape. If not, then I'm going to be looking at a portable chiller at the Julie to keep them going, and those aren't cheap.
Do, Councilmember Gitts?
You mentioned, I believe, that you abandoned a line to the Julie for the hot.
It was, it was, it was done before I stepped in the position where I'm at. But they, they apparently developed a leak in there, so they just cut it off and put a boiler at the Julie to take care of their hot water issues over there.
So I don't know what the difference in cost would be to put a boiler over at the library, but could you speculate on that a little bit?
Well, we entertained that, but it's not going to solve my problem with my chill water now.
Okay. I mean.
It's, I mean, I'm in a critical situation here. If we don't proceed ahead, we're going to end up with some issues. I mean, and it's going to impact college. We're going to open cut college, so it's going to cut college off for a period of time while we lay that line.
Can you estimate how long?
I think the contractor has like ninety working days on his proposal. So hopefully, it may be go a little bit better, but that's probably worst case right now, depending on the weather, what we run into. But I've got a lot of obstacles to cross, so it's a difficult project.
Councilmember Turner.
I noticed from a budget standpoint, we had roughly $650,000 budgeted for this project, but it came in roughly $122,356 over the budget. Can you kind of speak to some of those reasons we've seen the rise?
I can just speculate as far as, you know, the difficulty of the project and then, you know, the timeframe where we bid it originally to where we're at now. The, the original time, we were trying to bore across it, but I've got only about a two-foot window to hit four pipes. And meeting with boring contractor, he had heartburn on that. So that's where I went, changed methods, and went to the open cut method so we can see what we're encountering and work around it.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
So you've heard the reading and the explanation of item number two, to replace the hot and chill water pipes located between the Beaumont Public Library and the Police Department. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All in favor for approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes. Council proven, proven ordinance, amend in Title I, Chapter Twenty, Section Twenty point zero three point zero zero three of the Code of Ordinance that would change the speed limit on, on Sarah Street. It had been observed that on the west end of Sarah Street, there's been some speeds different than the rest of Sarah Street. So we're looking at making an adjustment to add consistency of the speeds throughout the street. of the speeds throughout the, uh, the street. And staffers recommend an approval for amend in Title I, Chapter 20, Section 20.03.003.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protim Duriya?
Um, I just want to thank staff for not only this part, but the restriping, it was started yesterday. We had a few phone calls, most of them are in support of it, slowing down Sarah Street, and what they've done so far looks pretty nice. Thanks for getting started. You know about how long that's gonna take?
I don't, I can get you the, the timeline, but I don't off the top of my head, that's right.
And as far as the speed limit, they just had to change the signs?
Yes, sir. We should have it done probably this week, I would imagine.
All right. So hopefully that'll help with the speeding on Sarah Street, Sarah Raceway.
Well, Mayor Protim, I was at my great-grandmother's house on Sunday, and obviously they worked either on Friday or Saturday, because I was confused. I looked at the street and I thought, I say, oh, it's something different. And I thought, oh, because the bike lanes were there between U San and Lou Street.
Yeah, they're all the way down to Bob now, so they moving, they moving pretty fast.
It looks so different, so, so different. And really, you just have to get used to it. You have to get used to it, especially if you're familiar with going down there. Absolutely. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Turner?
Hey, Councilman Duriya, I think it'd be pretty good to kind of speak to the why. You know, you first started this project. I know we talked to it, a couple of citizens have, you know, called and had concerns. I think it'd be a good opportunity to speak to the why.
Well, for safety reasons, we'd have, we'd have, had a child was run over on Sarah Street due to speeding. We've had cars run into people's houses, fences, bushes, carports due to speeding on Sarah Street. And police went out there and they wrote a lot of tickets. But we had stop signs put up and people, people were running them. So we did a year-long study to see what we could do to, to slow folks down. And this is what they came up with, restriping from two lanes each way to one lane each way with a turn lane in the middle and two bicycle lanes. Same thing that it done, I, I didn't realize until I rode down Calder one day, and that's how Calder is all the way from downtown to the highway. Same thing with Gladys, Virginia, Beaufort Street. And, uh, staff, Bart told me that afterwards, especially on Gladys, not only did it slop, slowed people down, but that the traffic kind of reduced also. So that's, that's a good thing, especially with a school right there on the street, on Blanchett. So we had to do something. Not, um, and we had to pick, some people thought they may be inconvenienced, but it's not that much traffic on Sarah. I don't think anybody'd be inconvenienced. And if you had to pick between safety and convenience, then we had to go with safety. And so we, we had to do something. And I said, I thank staff. It was a year-long study that we did out there and came up with this idea, and it's just got to start yesterday.
And Mayor Protim, um, thank you for the work that you put in on that. A lot of times people think that we just decide to go out and do something, and we don't. That was a lot, a lot of conversation from citizens, and not all citizens was happy with the decision. And so, um, of course, everything that we do, it's, it's on a majority basis. And so that was done. And not only was that child run over, that child was killed on Sarah Street. And it is, it's like Sarah Street Raceway. And so hopefully, this will slow them down. And if not, I'm sure we have a police car that's waiting to write more tickets, unfortunately.
I did get an answer for Councilman Duriya. By the end of next week, we expect the striping to be finished.
Well, it's, it's well on the way, and it's, it's looking good.
They're, they're pretty quick.
Thank you. So is there any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes. Council consider a resolution approving the city's legislative priorities, but it's actually the agenda. We've, for the last few months, weeks, we've been talking about the possibility of establishing an agenda for the city of Beaumont within the eighty-eight Texas legislative session. We had a discussion, last meeting, in which some things were talked about, staff brought forward some, some priorities of theirs. City council added their priorities in that discussion. And basically, well, this'll be the second one. What you have before you is a draft legislative agenda for you to shape and for you to form and for you to identify what, and rank those priorities. Whatever we have is a draft. So whatever you choose as a council going forward will be how they, they will be ranked going forward. But then, once it's done, you know, we could use it as a tool when we have discussions, excuse me, talks with our legislators, or even the public. They'll, they'll know where the city stands as a group, because it'll be voted on by the entire council. So this is here with your consideration of approval and formation of a resolution and our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Samuel and Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Williams, this document on, of this list of priorities are, will that be something that we do when we go to Austin on, on the Hill Day?
Yes, Councilmember Samuel, this'll be kind of like a living document that will, that will list your, your agenda, the things you see as important to the city of Beaumont going to Austin. You know, we'll visit the different legislators, share this document with them, have conversations with them. So yes, it will travel to Austin.
Okay, and possibly to Washington in the Congress of Cities when we're trying to move to get assistance.
Yes, it, it goes state, federal, local, county, you know, the, the stakeholders that we will deal with and go on interactions.
Okay, I, I, after reviewing our priorities for this upcoming year, I was pleased to see most everything in there. However, I did believe, or it was my understanding, that these are priorities that this council would say we are supporting, and these are things that we would like to see in our city. And I did have a concern when we talk about our economic development. I was a bit perplexed with priority number two. And I'm assuming these priorities are listed as our priorities of, you know, number one, that's the top concern from our city, right?
Yes, the way that it's constructed, yes. You could just, you could put a document without listing, putting a number on them if you want to, and just say, these are things that are important to us. But the way that it's carefully constructed, constructed, it says these are the things that are most important in this order. Again, you have the ability, I mean, you're here today as a council, you have the power to say, we want them in this order, and that's the way to go.
Okay. Well, I'll just cut through the chase. I, I do have a concern about the perception that will be given in one of the items here. Under the first objective, under the priority in economic development, in dealing with relocation of this battleship to Beaumont, it was not my understanding that that has been given as a priority of this council. Because I wanted to make sure my position is noted and understood. I believe that, my belief, from what I've seen thus far, that the battleship is not conducive to what we're trying to do in that area. It may be for some, but that's not a consensus. That is not something I want to say we're trying to do here in Beaumont, Texas. I am not trying to get the battleship to Beaumont, Texas, because it takes deregulation. Am I correct that this channelway would be deregulated in order to move forward with that?
There would be some things we would have to get through by the port authority and other entities.
And that also had, it's my understanding that should that be a necessity to have that channel deregulated, that would put all responsibility back on the city of Beaumont to restore, such as, how much was this project to restore the, the bank here?
I, I don't know that number.
Okay, but.
Anyone who can answer that?
It was just, just under seventeen million dollars was the successful bid to restore the bank.
Okay, and isn't, if that was deregulated, that would have been our responsibility to do that?
No, the, the banks, the Riverfront Bank stabilization was FEMA money to restore Riverfront Park after Harvey. So that had nothing, that would have nothing to do with deauthorization of a portion of the shipping channel. What I think you're probably referring to is the potential that if we deauthorize part of the shipping channel, that we might be on the hook for future dredging of that channel, not anything to do with the bank.
Okay, so that would be the dredging of the channel, and that full responsibility would be on us?
Potentially, that's right.
And what is the approximate cost of the dredging? Thus, what has it been?
We've never dredged before as a city, so I don't have those costs at hand. The, the port has dredged, and the Sveen Nature's Navigation District has dredged, but we've never, we've never dredged.
Okay. Well, if that becomes our responsibility, I think that would be important to know. And one of the other concerns I have about that, to have legislative priorities, that tends to make me believe that that is the desire of the council. And I've never had the understanding that the desire of the council was to actively go and get the battleship to bring it here. Because it was my understanding, we were doing the further, looking at the cost of that to see what that cost might be. But I don't want it to come across that I am in support of getting the battleship in, in the air, in the channel here. And again, mine is based on, I've had too many folks that enjoy the water, the riverfront, those type of things, and having events, they would like to bring their boats to the park or whatever, the amphitheater. That would be a draw. And it's my understanding that we cannot move that battleship if it were to be here. It could not be moved closer to the bridge, and it could not be moved further down the river. So it would have to be in that area right by the five-five-five building.
Elizabeth Street.
And that would take up all of the scenery and all of the bank wherever it's more. And that has been my concern all along, and I don't, don't believe that would be conducive to the development of that area as a draw to the downtown area alone. And because of the size of the project, the size of the ship, that's not gonna allow any other aesthetics other than the ship itself. So I want to make sure it's understood that that's not my position. I am not supporting trying to get the battleship to come to Beaumont.
Councilmember Gitts?
So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tina, our council has already passed a resolution supporting the fact that we want, as a council, the Battleship Texas to come to Beaumont. Is, or Shere, are you familiar with that?
I think we did a resolution of support in order to go with the commission, the port authority. I don't know if it was actually approved by the council, but I think it was specific to get, to let the port know that we were in consideration, so that they would consider the deregulation.
And the Battleship Texas is five hundred and eighty-six feet long. The proposed location is not behind the current site of the five-five-five Main Street, it is further north behind Edison Plaza. There is no doubt that having a national registered historical monument, which is the Battleship Texas, would absolutely bring people into downtown, which is part of economic development. We're, we're trying to pursue as our number one priority, a qualified hotel program. Now, I'm not saying that people are gonna come stay in a hotel when they, to come in and watch the battleship, but I can guarantee you one thing, should we be fortunate enough to have a battleship here, people that are staying in the hotel for other reasons are almost certainly gonna go want a tour of that Battleship Texas. You don't just turn your back on an opportunity to get something of this magnitude, which would be a tremendous draw to get people downtown. And we're a long way from getting it. You know, there, there are hurdles to be crossed, but the concern about the dredging that was brought up, we do not have deep water vessels going north at the KCS Bridge any longer. It's just not happening. And that is why the Army Corps of Engineers currently does not bother dredging the Nature's River north of the KCS Bridge, because there's no need to. We have occasional barges that go over to Beaumont and maybe some other locations, but you don't have deep vessel, uh, deep draft vessels going north at the bridge. So the need to do any type of dredging is such a remote possibility. Only if it was to become silted in through some catastrophic event like Harvey, would you likely need to have dredging. But, as you know, Councilmember Samuel, when you have a catastrophic event like Harvey, that brings with it FEMA. And FEMA is tasked with helping to restore things to the way they were before, like they're doing for Riverfront Park. So even with deauthorization of the channel, and we let the Army Corps of Engineers be released of their responsibilities to dredge, which they're not doing now, if something were to occur that necessitated dredging, then you would likely have FEMA coming in to take care of that responsibility, even if the Army Corps of Engineers. And FEMA can direct the Army Corps of Engineers to go dredge, to put it back like it was. So all I'm saying is, we've got so much good stuff in this report, we have never done anything like this before. We've had Golden Triangle days, and individual council members would go to Austin, and, you know, it'd be like herding cats, because everybody had their own agenda. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for suggesting that we all get together and formulate a unified legislative agenda. And I understand, Councilmember Samuel, and I think everybody knows your position on this, you've made it quite clear. But I think the consensus of council is that it would be a good thing to have the Battleship Texas here, and that's why we signed the resolution and passed it the way we did. And I hope it comes to fruition. That's where I'm at.
Councilmember Turner?
Uh, Mr. Manager, can you please kind of speak to the difference between the resilience priority number five and priority number eleven, the water and water wastewater infrastructure? Or could someone, could staff kind of speak to the difference between those two?
What were those numbers, Councilmember?
Five and number eleven.
Okay. And after I bring, Chris, you can, I'll open mine, but you can go start.
Is it, is it possible that they could be consolidated? You, you recommend that they stay separate? And I, and I appreciate that. I wanted to get your opinion on it. And lastly, I do take the position that with water and wastewater infrastructure being one of the most pressing things that we discuss in the city of Beaumont, I don't think it is wise, if we're looking and ranking things as a priority, that is ranked last, and that's Number Eleven. I think that definitely should be one of the top three priorities for the city of Beaumont with the current state that we have dealing with some of our personal problems in Beaumont. I think it's wise that we actually cater our agenda to what we're really pressing and dealing with in the city of Beaumont. And I think for that to be Number Eleven, and this being one of the most important things in Beaumont, I don't think it looks like we have our priorities together and straight. I would much rather see and get some support from the council if we can get that moved up to a top three priority, versus it being, you know, the last priority.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say. For Number Eleven, for water wastewater and flooding to be Number Eleven, we had major flooding in the city. I'm still living it down, so personally. I, I just believe that it needs to be moved up as one of our top three priorities also. But getting back to Councilmember Samuel and Councilmember Gibbs on the Battleship Texas, we have talked about the Battleship Texas, but the Battleship Texas had not been one of our priorities. As a matter of fact, we have not talked about the Battleship Texas for a very, very long time. And to put it as an objective of our number two priority right now, that's not something that we discussed. As a matter of fact, the last time we spoke about it is we were waiting for the Sabine Area to come back with a report. If I'm not mistaken, and if I'm wrong, please, someone, please correct me. But we were, we were waiting for a report to come back.
Right, the last resolution authorized us to send a letter on behalf of the city to the Port of Beaumont asking for their support in deauthorizing the portion of the federal channel that needed to be deauthorized so that we could place the ship in the river. And we're waiting on the Port of Beaumont's response to that letter. It, it has been sent to the port, but we haven't got a response yet.
So to make it a number two pri- uh, priority and objective, and we're still waiting because our understanding is that more than likely, that would probably not get approved. And we've, we've been waiting on that, that information for a while.
I've checked with Chris Fisher at the port, and he told me a couple of weeks ago that a response was coming. I haven't gotten it yet, but I can't speculate as to what the response is.
Well, we leave for Austin, most of us are leaving for Austin Sunday for Golden Triangle Days. And if we're going to present this and for it to be a number two priority, that's not a good look, and, and the council as a whole, I'm going to call on you, hold on. Uh, the council as a whole, we have not made that a priority. And when we've had flooding in our city, and to say that Number Eleven is flooding and water and wastewater infrastructure. I mean, you put it on there, but if, if anything's going to be the last priority, I would think something that we don't have a ruling on, and the ruling is not in our control, it should not be flooding, water, wastewater, again, anything that has to do with water in our city, and when it comes to citizens not being able to flush their toilets, that has to be a higher priority for me.
Councilmember Gibbs, and then Mayor Pro Tim Duria. And then, Councilmember Samuel, you want to say something?
I just want to clarify, I am, I am not opposed to economic development being a number two priority.
Right.
That's, that's not my issue. But I just don't believe that as the bullet points under economic development, I disagree with the battleship being a part of that number two objective. That's, that's all.
So this gets to what I wanted to say. The priority number two is not the Battleship Texas coming to Beaumont.
That's why I said the objective.
It is, it is, it is economic development.
Correct.
Now, one of the subcategories under economic development is the battleship. And if you go look at the resolution that we passed as a council, it actually has language in there that says, "We support bringing the Battleship Texas to Beaumont." That's, that's in the resolution, you know, you can go back and read it.
Well, whether it's in the resolution or not, it, like I said, I'm one of those human beings. If that got to, if it came to council, then I made a mistake.
Well, I don't think you supported it, Alden.
But all I'm saying, regardless of what you're saying has transpired, I'm telling you, I do not support the Battleship Texas being professed to be a priority from me as a council member with the consensus of this council. Because I did not get the feeling, the entire council, there was a consensus that we wanted the Battleship as a priority. That's all I'm saying.
The priority.
Back and forth, but that's my position.
The, the priority is economic development.
Exactly.
One of the subcategories under economic development is the desire, as expressed by the majority of council, to bring the Battleship Texas to Beaumont. And I'm sorry if you didn't read the resolution, but that's what it says. So there is no doubt that bringing the Battleship Texas to Beaumont would promote economic development in Beaumont. There, I mean, there have been studies done by accounting firms that show how much economic impact would be generated by bringing that ship here.
And Councilmember Gibbs, so that we don't go into the rehearsal of what has been defined. We are aware that the economic development portion of it is there, but as a council as a whole, and for it to be the top subject matter as an objective of our number two priority of economic development, I don't think that was.
Put it at the bottom of that category of priority number two. It doesn't matter to me, but.
I just think we have more pressing issues, and we're not seeing that economic development is not a priority. But there are some serious, serious water issues.
Well, but, but you talked about water issues, and you talked about sewage issues, Mayor, in the same breath. And, and those, those are different things.
They are.
And, and so.
And they're two different, Number Five and Number Eleven.
So we've got water and wastewater infrastructure, which is absolutely a priority of all of us on council. But what my question would be is, to what extent does the state traditionally provide municipalities support for their individual waste and water infrastructure? My understanding is that that is generally stuff that is funding from your enterprise fund. And if we have been missing out on opportunities to go to the state of Texas to get them to help us with that infrastructure, I'd like to know about it.
The state doesn't.
This, there are opportunities at the state level that we have pursued before. So the Texas Water Development Board, they will issue essentially lower, and Todd, you may want to jump in here, but there are, they will issue lower interest bonds for, I know we approached them several years ago about an additional wastewater treatment plant. So between that and, again, overlap with resiliency, you know, you have funding coming down through maybe the General Land Office, maybe through TDM. So there, there, there are other opportunities out there.
So you're talking about the Texas Water Development Board in helping you with bonds, but still, that is bonds that's going to be issued by the city, and you're basically, you're going to be borrowing money, maybe at a more preferred rate. But you're not talking about grants, we're not talking about anything like that. You're, you're still basically going to have to fund your own infrastructure as a municipality. Is that correct or not correct?
Well, the, the majority of the financial responsibility would fall on the city, but there are opportunities at the state level.
I think we ought to pursue everything we can, and, you know, I, I just, you, you know, when we talk about priority number eleven being water and wastewater infrastructure, I think we have to recognize that we, as a city, are going to have to fund the lion's share of that. And I'm, but, I, I am certainly in favor of going after anything that we can. I just don't think that there is a whole lot out there that is available for us to be the beneficiary of. Mr. Williams, do you, I mean, what opportunities are you aware of that the state can help us with?
Well, water, wastewater is certainly an issue in Beaumont. You've heard me speak in public, and it, and I probably spoke that that was our biggest problem, quite frankly. You know, there are things out there, there, there are grants out there sometimes. There are sometimes a, a professional assistance with engineering or, or just people come in and do assessments. There's Texas Water Development Board that sets rules and things that can make rulings or put rules that maybe help you out in what you're trying to achieve. So there's a different way, there are different ways to get to that point and where you're trying to go with the water and wastewater rule. I guess, from what I'm hearing, I, I'm hearing that the water wastewater probably needs to be in the top three. Everybody's out of consensus. Are we, are we still good on the qualified hotel being one? Because we're, we're proposing some legislation that affects that.
Yes.
Water and wastewater, two? Is economic development still important enough to be three? Would have to work through the issue of the battleship?
I think it's still important enough.
Yes, I think, I think it's still important enough. I think, I think one of the main things for the community and the citizens, when we're talking about priorities, we make sure we're making priorities that actually affect our city at the top. You know, in a perfect world, I like to do some of these big, great things, but I want to make sure we take care of our people first, or attempt to, or go every, go after every type of resource we can to take care of our people, and kind of what you stated, the main number one problem in our city is wastewater and some of the infrastructure with our water. So I think if we're going to have a legislative agenda, if that's the main problem, it's most important to make it one of the top priorities.
Okay. Is public safety and health, that addresses a lot of things, such as homelessness, et cetera, still four?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Just one clarification, those are two different.
Yeah, they're two separate. Can we, can we combine them?
Public safety and health? What's that?
Public health is three and public safety is four.
Public safety is three.
Public safety and public health.
So we tried to group them based on the legislative bills that were attached to them. And so a lot of the public safety bills are separate and apart from the mental health or public health. So that's kind of why they're separate, right? Because we'll be targeting different commissions and different chairman and different things. So I would recommend that they stay separate if, if you kind of understand like the purpose for that.
So health is four, safety five, or vice versa?
Yes.
Okay, health, safety. There was, see, there was a question about resiliency. You know, resiliency is really kind of putting things in place to, to make sure your future is taken care of, you know? It's, it's things to make sure the environment's okay, is make sure that we have the right infrastructure or the right resources that's going to make sure that our kids are going to have a great place to live, work, and play. So is resiliency that important enough to be, stay six?
A lot of our resiliency needs are being concerned with the FEMA grants that we got after Harvey, is my understanding. And we're, you know, resiliency to me also means kind of a belt and suspenders type of approach. You know, if one thing gets knocked out, you have the ability to go forward with something else. So we have a, you know, new water pumping plant that's being built. You know, I, I don't know specifically what other things we have in mind for resiliency purposes, but, you know, specific projects. But I'm not sure that needs to be as high as it is right now, given that we have already received so much FEMA money.
Is that a want to lower the resiliency?
So basically, as we stand right now, the direction we're going is just being bumped down to Number Six, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Then transportation, mobility. Seven?
Yeah.
Transportation, number seven?
Yeah, it would drop to seven.
So we're just pushing everything?
Because we move water and wastewater up, then revenue.
And City Manager, I, I heard you earlier. I think what we're communicating to the citizens also is that all these priorities are important to us. We're just listing them out as here's one, here's two, here's three. It's not necessarily in the rank of importance, but I also agree with everyone else in the fact that perception is important. And so I, I agree with the moves we're making, but yet I still think we need to let the citizens know that all eleven of these priorities are important to us.
Absolutely.
It's just, we're, we're just listing them out, we're not trying to rank them. We're, we're trying to make it clear, I mean, I, like on the Battleship Texas, I always thought that the consensus of the, the council was is let's move forward as one step at a time. Didn't we allocate twenty thousand dollars to do a study at one point? And we're just going one step at a time to see the possibility of bringing the ship here. But we're also communicating to the state that we'd like some of your support. We'd like financial support from the state of Texas to help us with this. I always thought the council understood that if we can't afford this, we're not going to do it.
Right.
Uh, but yet we have to communicate to the state of Texas, we're interested, but you're going to have to make a commitment to us and partner with us to get this done. That's why I assumed you put that in there. It was just a statement that we're interested in doing this as we go one step at a time and jump through these different hoops.
I think when, as far as this Battleship Texas deal goes, it said, the, the resolution was to approach the port and the Sabine Nature's Pilots Association. And, and because if we bring that ship here, we would have to redredge the federal channel. If we, yes, they said we would have to redredge the federal channel.
And that, that's, that's not true.
If we refred, and if we redredge the federal channel, then that would make us responsible for next time a storm or something comes through. That's what, that's what we were told, that that would put the responsibility on the city of Beaumont. And that, and they just said, we, they just said we would have to redredge it to sit the ship over there. We would have to redredge the federal channel, didn't you just say that?
No.
Sorry, we, we have a dead mic, so.
Okay.
Sharing a mic. Where we've positioned the ship, tentatively per plan, would require very minimal to no dredging, depending on exactly where we put it next to the shore. What we're asking for is the deauthorization of part of the channel so that that gets the Corps of Engineers out of the way, because if we're close to a federal channel, the Corps of Engineers out of the way, because if we're close to a federal channel, they're not going to approve it and.
But if that deauthorization, what does that make us responsible for?
If we deauthorize the channel, we're potentially on the hook for dredging the portion that's been deauthorized in the future, but we're not having to dredge anything to get the ship in.
And were we, you said you sent a letter to the Port of Beaumont?
The Port of Beaumont.
And it wasn't something with the Sabine Nature's?
It's the Sabine Nature's Navigation District. They're the authority that's responsible for the navigation.
But we would all have to be in agreement.
They're, they're looking to the port to support it. If the port supports it and we move forward, then we would ask Sabine Nature's Navigation District to actually ask for the deauthorization.
So just to clarify, the resolution that was approved was to authorize the city manager staff to send that letter?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and in that letter, it does say that the city council is interested, the purpose for the letter is that the council is interested in showing support. So funds haven't been allocated, council didn't approve to, to vote to approve to get the battleship, nothing like that, that the resolution, the sole purpose of the resolution was just to authorize that kind of conversation to move forward.
Right.
Exactly.
Mayor, mayor, and I, I did not bring that up to delay this process or even interrupt the process of putting together our legislative priorities. The only thing I'm saying, I don't want to attach or piggyback something that I am not in support of as a council saying we are supporting at this point. Everything, I mean, and, and I don't think we can, it's improper for us to give a false perception. If these numbering of the priorities, if we are numbering priorities, I think it needs to be numbered according to our.
Priorities.
Priorities. But either we number or we don't. We say these are the things that we're wanting to do. These are the things that's important to the city of Beaumont. These are the things we want your help in getting done. These are the things we want to attach to, want certain bills to address. That's one thing. But if we're going to give numbers, let's give priorities. And all I'm saying is, I support the legislative priorities that we put together. I support ranking those legislative priorities, but I do not want to attach something that I am not considering as a priority as a part of one of our legislative priorities. That's all. And I don't want to go back and forth and, that's something we can deal with later, unless it's something that this council wants to say is at one of our priority economic development projects. If that's what this council says, I'm just one in the minority and that's fine, but I am not going to say I support an economic development priority if the battleship is being touted as being one of our priorities, because that's not what I'm saying. So I'm not, and I'm done, I'm not going back and forth.
Well, good, but I certainly have a right, I think, to respond, but, you know, economic development is a priority and certainly there's objectives under economic development. Heck, we'd like to get an Amazon distribution center here. You know, that would be an objective under economic development. We'd like to do a lot of things under, under.
I just wanted to ask, I've never been up there to the Golden Triangle days or anything like that. If we prioritize our objectives, when we get them up there and give them to our rep, will they reprioritize it?
Well.
Or does it stay like this?
This is just a document that identifies what's important to you. Now, remember, when you get up there, they have their own priorities. And just because it's your top priority, it doesn't make it theirs, but they see that you have interest or you have support. Number 10 might be their priority and they're going to reach back and say Beaumont supports public health. Let's go get somebody from Beaumont, the mayor, to testify for my bill. You know, so it's, while we're ranking them, don't get caught up on the numbers because there's so many issues up there that they're all over the place and.
This is, this is just our document making us, telling them what interests us and they could do what they want with this document.
Right, right, they can do that and they will. You know, they're going to use it to their best interest, whoever's up there, up there, whoever, whether it's our representative or some other representative, we'll see what's important to us.
One moment. So you're done. Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, the, the good thing and the benefit of it is just kind of the reality to, you know, us putting together a park budget. We might have something we want to do that might not make it this year, but we can always add it to the following budget the following year, go after it the next year. I think it's important to understand some of our objectives, if we're keeping up with some of the legislative priorities right now, a lot of our objectives line up with some of the things that are already being discussed out there at the Texas state level. And it's also a good opportunity because you got to have those relationships. You know, we got Speaker of the House, we got our state rep, Christian Manuel, it's real good to kind of talk with those guys and keep abreast of, or some of our priorities, something that's really being discussed at the House and how strong and likely it is to see some of those things get pushed through. So I think the good thing about it is a lot of ours lined up with the county, so there's even more weight coming from Jefferson County. So I think we're kind of in a good place right now as far as get things done. But the reality is, just like you, Mike, Otto, we all got different priorities. So, yeah, we'll probably get up there and see, they might be interested in maybe three out of our 10, but I think you and I both know we're going to fight for all 11 of them, so.
Well, and also you, you have your Texas Municipal League president, which David, Mayor David Eldrich, Eldrich is from Bridge City, and so he's going to play a big part in that also, because he goes before them to testify. Please turn your cell phone off.
Yes, good point, man. They have their legislative agenda.
They have their agenda also.
They set a legislative agenda. And you know, Councilmember Turner mentioned aligning, you know, we have a, the person that's over the transportation committee represents us and sent in the Senate. So anything we put on here for transportation, Senator Nichols is going to look for Beaumont to come in on.
Absolutely.
Feel like what's important to you on this topic, because I don't want to do nothing to hurt my constituents. So it's important that we be representing these things. And it's not always the ranking, sometimes it's the fact that you feel this way about it and we can work together.
Okay, so where are we now?
We have a motion and a second on the floor for item number four. We just finished.
Okay, so all discussion is completed?
I'll just, since we're into this, I'll just make sure we get to the rest of these numbers, if you don't mind, mayor.
Sure.
And I think we stopped at eight with revenue. The rest of them, okay with you and all that, instead of going, taking them one by one.
I think it just kind of shifted each one of them down once we prioritize one, two, and three.
Yeah, 11 is all the way up to two.
Yep.
Right, and then it shift everything else back one.
If that's the case, and there was a comment, and I know Councilman Samuel has his feeling, would it matter if the wording were different and how we had it worded with that and then dropping some down and some bullet points on lower on the list? As it states, "City of Beaumont supports legislation that funds the full restoration of the Battleship Texas and relocation to downtown Beaumont's Nature's River." That's pretty plain to me.
Well, Councilmember Samuel, that was because we said back when we were discussing this in earnest, that we would, if we're going to get the Battleship Texas here, we would rather not spend local taxpayer dollars to do it. It's, the ship is owned by the state of Texas. We would like to have legislation passed to allow the ship's infrastructure, the mooring, to be paid for by the state of Texas, and that's what that means.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gertz, I understand what you're saying. I'm simply saying I am not supporting the relocation of the battleship at this time to Beaumont, Texas.
And I am, so we differ, okay?
And we're going to agree to be different.
Okay, we possibly.
So I'm simply asking, if this council wants to say they support the, this objective as it's written, that's fine. I will vote the way that I feel I need to vote, but if there's, if that's okay. But I prefer that at least that bullet point be removed from this objective.
And I feel strongly it should stay, so, I mean, you know.
One moment, okay.
Mayor, there is a motion on the floor for it, and I just want to clarify before y'all vote on it, that there have been amendments made, and so if you're going to move forward for then Councilman Gertz, I believe you made the motion to clarify for the record, you need to make a motion that you accept the legislative agenda as amended.
Okay.
At the time, because I just wanted to make sure that got out before we got too far ahead of ourselves.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gertz, would you, would you support the amendment of moving this bullet point down to the bottom, just in the spirit of cooperation with Council, Councilman Samuel?
Yes.
That it's making a statement, it's perception, but it's making a statement that we so far have shown interest, and I did confirm with the city attorney, we did allocate $20,000 to do a study on the birth, and we have taken the position as we've gone along, one step at a time. And this is just one more step. If the state of Texas steps up and says, hey, we're going to pay for millions of dollars of birthing this thing, I can't imagine this council would turn that down. All we're doing is making it known that we're interested, but we're not voting on it today. So would you amend it to move the bullet point down to, to, to make a statement to them that we, we're just, this is one of the things, but it's not the priority on economic development?
Of course.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Williams, can you, are you finished?
I'm finished, mayor. I think basically all we are, we're moving 11 up to two and the rest of them, well, going orders as written.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gertz, Councilmember Gertz, will you please amend your motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the previous to talk about the order and priorities as discussed here today.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
He got it, Turner, he's quicker than me.
A little younger. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please sign the CNI.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries, thank you. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Thank you, mayor. Counsel, consider a resolution approving the recommendations for the parks capital improvement plan set forth in fiscal year 2023. During the budget, during the preparation of the budget this year, discussion began with council on possible park projects that wasn't able to be completed by the approval of the budget, so that discussion has continued with council. So we're bringing that back to you with the list of possible projects for you to consider for approval. Again, that's your consideration, but we're giving you more information. On the dice before you, you have a list of projects, projects that were recommended by administration, projects that were recommended by the Parks Advisory Board, and also you have some dollar figures, numbers there for you to help you make your decision. So we're bringing that before you. We hope that, to get a decision because we, we need to start working on these projects and then preparing for the next budget year for a list of projects, so we know which ones we need to work with, carry over for next year, and start making preparations. So we're asking council to consider approving the list of capital program projects for the parks.
So you've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the recommended list by the administration for the capital improvements of these park projects.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion?
Yes, mayor.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Felschore?
Gertz had his hand up first, I'll yield to him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Turner, Gertz, Felschore.
I, I didn't, but I will.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Then he was waving a flower, I guess, but I'll take it. Go ahead, Turner.
Councilmember Turner?
Uh, just, just a few. First and foremost, I thank staff, Jimmy, Kenny, thank you guys for working together to kind of get this thing going. We've been talking about this for quite some time and I just want to let you know, I appreciate y'all all working together through all the ups and downs to get to this point. My next question is, I see Magnolia Park convert resurfaced tennis courts to basketball courts, but we have an existing court there that's already established. Are we going to, is that court going to be reverted or are we saying we're just going to do the tennis courts or, or do we have a choice out of either or?
Okay, I'm going to defer to staff on that recommendation.
That wasn't really proposed to us. We, if you remember, the existing court was the one that Councilman Gertz proposed potentially putting some lower goals on. When we met last time, it was the first time it was ever brought to our attention to convert the tennis courts to basketball courts, which we supported wholeheartedly. So right now, there's no plan to do anything different with the current court.
Okay, I just have a question. I think some of us are familiar with Magnolia Park, that current court is basically the corner lot, which is primary, like prime real estate, and I think if we're going to do a, a court, it makes more sense to do the court that's on the corner versus the tennis court that's kind of, it's kind of right behind the recreational center. I know Councilman Samuel, that's your word, that's your area, so I kind of want to get your opinion on the differentiation of the courts and what you thought. I kind of think it'd be good to do the one that's more visible, but I kind of want your opinion on that.
Okay, well, my, my question was, it says, "The following improvements will be made", and it says, "Central or Magnolia Park, resurface the tennis courts to basketball courts." That tells me they're talking about resurfacing whatever one it is to, as opposed to being tennis courts, that would be converted to basketball courts.
I think there could be a little combination of what you're seeing there. The document I have just says Magnolia Park for the conver, conversion. We had talked about doing something at Central or Magnolia, similar to what we did at Rogers last year. So that was the initial proposal, that you guys were going to choose which one you wanted, and then Councilman Gertz brought up taking the tennis courts that really aren't utilized very much at the Pruitt Center and converting those to, we could put two basketball courts. So it was, you know, it's something we don't have, so we thought it was a really great opportunity.
So it's kind of like, Jimmy, we can get more bang for our buck if we did the tennis court, you're saying, versus the?
I feel like we probably could, and like we just said, it's not something we have. I do agree with you that it would be a lot better to see it on the corner. I don't think we can scoop that up and move it up front. I don't think Keith would want us to do that.
The flip side of that also though, Jimmy, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is a covered area that you could sit under and watch basketball being played out there where the tennis courts are now. So that, that already exists.
There is a little pavilion there. There's also a smaller covered area over by the other basketball court, kind of adjacent to the playground.
Right.
Okay. You kind of got, you kind of got all of my questions. These say different things.
Yeah, I think what, and I don't have the one in front, the one in your right hand, I don't have that in front of me.
This is the one we're voting on.
Yes, so just clarification, so I think the Central is a carryover. We had originally brought this to council back in November, and I think that was the original, I think at the time it was Central or Magnolia, but I think where we're at now is Magnolia.
Okay, but that's not what my packet document says. The packet document says "or".
Mm-hmm, it'd be up to the council.
I understand, but we go by, this is what the motion normally is based on. We have an attachment, but this is the document.
We have an attachment, but this is the document we'll be voting on. They are not saying the same thing. I just wanted to be clear before it comes to a vote on what is being proposed. So it's telling me what's being proposed is Magnolia or Central. If, and that's all I was trying to do. I'm not trying to muddy the waters. I want to understand. Maybe I'm the slow one today, but I want to understand what we're voting on.
No, I know the attachment and the, the one with the fees on it is Magnolia. So I know my document doesn't show anything with Central, potentially basketball court. I don't know if something, I don't know if what you have shows something different.
And the reason I say that, basketball court in Central Park is different from basketball court in Magnolia Park because of the usage. Or should I flip that? Tennis courts resurfacing in Magnolia would be different from tennis courts in Central. There's more uses for tennis courts in Central Park.
Well, we, we already resurfaced the tennis court at Central Park last year.
Well, I'm referring to the document that has been presented to us. I asked for clarification. Okay, so it's clear that this document will need to be amended. We're not talking about "or." We're talking about Central Park. Is that correct?
Magnolia Park.
Yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Samuel, just for the record, I don't know where Central Park ever came into with the idea of it being converted to basketball courts. That tennis court facility there, as Mr. Neal just said, is resurfaced, it looks great, it's being used. I don't know where that came from.
Okay, but am, am I correct? That's what it said?
That's what it says, and it probably shouldn't be saying that.
Yeah, it was, it was for just the basketball court. That was the, there's, there's some cute confusion, obviously, somewhere in the, the translation of what was posted. Um, but that was the initial discussion was, let's do either Central or Magnolia, resurface them like we did that, like we did Gladys.
At Rogers, at Rogers, got you.
A, a year and a half ago, or whenever it was. And then it was proposed, let's do something different, which is what we're now talking about at Magnolia.
Yes.
Okay, Jimmy, so now, now I'm following you. Basically, the courts that we're talking about are, is the court that we did similar to the one at Rogers Park. But it was two options on there. We can do the, redo the court at Alice Keefe, not Alice Keefe, Imagination Station, or the Magnolia Park Court.
Initially, that was what we were proposing.
And this was in this packet right here, yeah.
And what I'm seeing is the one that we convert the tennis courts to two basketball courts, which is what Councilman Gess proposed at our last meeting up here.
At Magnolia.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember Felschor.
Uh, Jimmy, first of all, I, as has been said, thank you for all this, and I, I support this a hundred percent. Just a couple of questions. The Combest, the Combest Park Playground Installation, how much does that park get used?
I mean, I don't have numbers for you, but it does get used. It's, it's in a pretty good neighborhood, especially that, that neighborhood's kind of being revitalized. And you've got a lot of kids out there.
Where is it?
Uh, Combest, it's Delaware and East Texas.
Delaware.
That's the park by Home Depot, correct?
Yes.
Kind of by Home Depot, off the freeway, yeah. It, it has about two parking spots there. It's like a neighborhood park.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's always people.
Well, it's, it's accessible to the freeway, yeah. It's, yeah, it's, it's in the middle of a neighborhood, kind of on the side.
I'm just not familiar with that park. And, and the reason I'm asking these questions is because one point four million dollars is really not that much money. And so you want to be careful with how you allocate that, and that's why I was asking. But in the Babe Saharis Park, I know that's a lot of, of soccer. I mean, there's a lot of people out there. That's heavily used. Is, is there a need for playground installation, and is that a request coming to us from the citizens?
There's been a lot of people that have come to me and said, look, we're out here playing soccer all the time. What, can we do something with our kids?
Okay. And on the athletic complex, replace nine scoreboards. I'm assuming these, these score, scoreboards cannot be refurbished, restored. Uh, again, I'm asking just because I feel like we have so little money here. It goes so quickly.
That's correct.
And so can we, can they be reworked, or you feel like they're, they've reached the end of their life?
I think we pretty much have reworked them as much as we can with new motherboards or whatever electronics need to be done. Um, we're trying to upgrade them to, to get something a little bit more modern. It's like your TV.
Yeah.
You know, eventually it runs its course.
You throw it away. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gess, and then Mayor Protim Doria.
So on the, um, requests that you're receiving, Jimmy, to put playground equipment at, uh, the, um, Babe Duhreskin Saharius Park where soccer's being played. Nobody, in my recollection, has come before council to ask that. No one has come before Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to ask that. So they might be asking you, but I haven't heard that before this document was prepared. There is playground equipment over at Ida Reed Park, right across the highway, uh, from the soccer fields. And I never see anybody playing on that. Uh, could that be relocated and put in Saharius Park?
I'm sure it's a possibility. Um, you know, it's not something we typically do, um, but I, I'm sure it's a possibility.
Well, I, I'm asking that because, again, I've never been approached by anybody wanting to have playground equipment at Saharius Park. It's a soccer park, and the reality is, there is a lot of transient traffic that goes by there. There, there is a lot of, uh, I mean, the Salvation Army is right adjacent to it. I, I, I don't know that if I'm out there playing soccer, uh, and I have played soccer on those fields before. And, uh, I, I don't know if I'd feel real, real comfortable with saying kids going off to play on the playground equipment. Just something to be thinking about over there.
The location that we proposed is pretty open. Uh, it's not right near the restrooms, which is where your transient issues tend to, to arise. So it seemed like a really good location, and, and the people that I've spoken with were super excited about the option.
Where, where is that location?
It would be kind of on the northern side of, north side of the park. Um, trying to name, remember the name of the street that goes in between the old football stadium and the BIST building, whatever that small street is called, kind of where you would, if you were to take that street and drive it all the way into the park, it would be behind that soccer field there.
Are there neighborhoods in that vicinity, or are we just kind of making this available for people that are playing soccer to park their kids?
They have a park right over there by those CDS apartments.
Cottonwood. Cottonwood's right over there.
Yeah, but that's, that's quite a distance. But what that would, that would provide an opportunity for, if a wife is going with their husband is playing soccer, or family's going out to, uh, be out there for a date, playing soccer, that allows the wife or the children to go to the playground equipment rather than having to just keep the children, you know, hostage right there watching soccer. Sometimes they don't, kids not quite as interested in something in watching if they're not participating, but it provides something for the kids to do when they're out there with parents.
I've been held hostage watching kids play sports a lot myself, but I understand.
Maybe you should have had a playground where you were.
Maybe so.
But you want them to go get on a swing set?
No one needs to see that, but I love getting on a swing set.
I would say I'd like to swing, but then I, I wouldn't, I don't think that would be an appropriate remark.
But, but Kenny, Kenny, to be honest, it is some discrepancies in pricing to the packet that's in our agenda and this paper we got right here. I think we need to know exactly which paper we need to be looking at in reference to the funding prior to making these decisions, because some of the pricing is a little different.
It's just the good one, the one that was at the charge.
I'm talking about the, like, some of the pork, some of the pork, yeah, the, the budget is different. Some of the park equipment is a little cheaper on this paper and higher on this paper. So which one are we looking at?
Yeah, the attachment that you have before you, the, the, basically the, uh,
The bigger one.
legal size, the bigger one, that's the one you should look at. The other one is.
Similar to what you were saying earlier.
Correct. That has today's date on it.
But that's not in the packet?
No, but that's, that, that, that's not my question.
Uh, but now, but see, my, my bigger question was, we're talking about the basketball courts, and on this one, the one you say we should be looking at, now it's clear. It's saying Magnolia Park.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the, back in November, when we brought this to you originally, it was that the, the agenda item was Central or Magnolia Park. I think since then, we've decided it needs to be Magnolia Park.
Okay.
And so it, it, the correction was not made in the agenda item, but that's, that's where it comes from. That should be reflected in the bigger spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you. And that was the question I, I wanted for clarity, you know, with Councilman Samuel being in it, or do you think it would be better to resurface the court that's already out there or that tennis court?
Well, it's telling me now, if, if I'm following, this is dealing with resurfacing the basketball court at Magnolia Park.
No, sir. This is converting the tennis courts.
This is converting.
Yeah, converting.
Basketball courts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's converting the basketball court, I mean, the tennis court to basketball.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, I, I, I understand that, but this gives me pricing. I understand that. This is cost, budgetary cost. This deals with what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I saw a discrepancy, and I wanted to make, make sure I was following it correctly. So I, I have no problem with resurfacing the tennis court at Magnolia Park to basketball, because that's what's utilized most at Magnolia Park. So that's all I was trying to, that's the whole point of my question, was to make sure that we were not making a decision, uh, about Central Park and Magnolia Park.
Okay.
We were simply making a decision about Magnolia Park. That's what the question was. But I do have another question.
Yeah, I, I'm almost done. Okay, okay, Jimmy, so now, now we're clear on that. We're past the Magnolia Park one. My next one was, we have this turf, uh, machine that we've been discussing. Could that be multipurposey used? Could it be used at the baseball fields too, or is it just for the football field?
It's for everything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
We've seen videos of it where it, it does a lacrosse field, a soccer field, a football field, and a baseball field, all at the same place.
Okay, good deal.
It's a pretty impressive piece of equipment.
Hmm, that's pretty much my last thing that I'm seeing right now. I just want to make sure we all got a clear understanding of what we're addressing and what we're doing and how it's gonna look. I don't want anybody to be confused after the fact. I just want everybody to know, it is another basketball court at Magnolia that won't be done, which is the court that's already existing that's on the corner by the playground equipment. So we're kind of clear on that. I just want everybody to be clear. It's a difference in those two. Yeah, push the kitchen next time.
Mayor Protim Doria.
I want to hear you saying, if they, uh, complete the Terrell Park Equestrian Trails and do the Magnolia Park pool maintenance, then all that doesn't matter, because all these other projects become unfunded, correct? That's what it says in here. It said, if, if they do that, you know, like my Sprott Park Shelter, Magnolia Car, Park Basketball Coles, Rogers Park Dog Park, Babe's Saharius Playground. If we, if we want those equestrian trails and fix the pool, then we can't have this other stuff.
So just one clarification on that. We met on this yesterday, and so originally, back when we came to council in November, Equestrian Trail was not on the list of recommend, recommended projects. Council asked us to go back to the Parks and Rec Committee. The Parks and Recreation Committee added the Equestrian Trail as a priority. And so we, Bart and his group were able to get an estimate of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for a turnkey, basically, to hire somebody to do the Equestrian Trail. So if we were gonna move forward with hiring somebody to do the Equestrian Trail, that was gonna knock out some of the other projects. We met on this yesterday and discussed it, and we feel like, uh, between the Millings, uh, Fourth Street and between using city, uh, force, uh, force labor, we can basically do this in-house. Um, and so basically, that three sixty-nine, three forty would not impact the bottom line. It wouldn't kick off some of these other projects. So going back to last week, it was an issue, but now it is not.
What about the, uh, the Magnolia Park Pool Maintenance?
So the update on the Magnolia Park Pool, again, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee recommended that we look into that. Keith Folsom is working with a group out of Houston to give us a firm estimate on what that's gonna cost. I think we agree we need to do it, uh, but we didn't want to wait. I think it may take up to a month to get those estimates, so we didn't want to wait. We wanted to go ahead and move forward with this recommendation, because I think we need to do it anyway, so.
Will it have any effect on those other projects?
No, so.
Pool maintenance?
Correct, no. So we, we're pulling it out, we're gonna look at it separately, so it should allow all these to go forward if approved today.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes, uh, I'm just curious, um, with the, with the recent contribution, magnificent contribution from ExxonMobil, uh, for the Charlton Pollard Park, uh, these replace, the replacement of playground equip, equipment, is that gonna be done, uh, is, as presented here? Is that out of our general funds, or is that a part of the funds that were granted by?
I'll address that, Councilmember. This is the money from our general fund. These dollars are strictly general fund dollars. This does not include the donation by Exxon. I'm reluctant to, to co-mingle funds, uh, you know, that's a grant. It needs to take care of what it's gonna take care, and we need to let our general fund take care of that. So we're gonna do the playground equipment with our dollars, and because some of the things that Exxon wants to do is not, they, they want to do other things too, so that dollar, that money's separate.
Great. So that leads me to the second question that I have. So the money that ExxonMobil will be used explicitly for the Charlton Pollard Park, is that correct?
Yes.
Great.
You're not gonna share?
Nope.
Nope.
Well, Kenny, I just think it's important that, you know, just as long as that Charlton Pollard community is abreast and understand the difference, I just think it's important that they all on the same page with what's going on. I know we see some representation from the Charlton Pollard neighborhood in the crowd. I just wanted to make sure that that funding was allocated, similar to what Councilman Samuel said, where it's supposed to go, and make sure it's addressed in that Charlton Pollard area and that park.
Yes, we had that discussion yesterday as a staff, and we talked about that. And, and I, my instructions to staff was, let's keep that, those dollars separate, you know, because it was a separate donation and we already had the money. And so we want, that allows to go, we can do more with that particular park and use the monies that was intended.
Well, and this was already allocated because of the playground equipment that had been identified as damaged. Anyway, we were already planning to do this.
Yeah, just needed to vote on it.
Right, we just needed to vote, so we do. We want to make sure that those dollars that was contributed by ExxonMobil were totally separate and directly applied to Charlton Pollard Park, what it was intended for. But now my question.
All right.
There is sixty thousand dollars for general maintenance. Can you explain general maintenance? Because our Parks Department already maintained all of the parks, so can you explain what the sixty thousand for maintenance is for? Some, someone?
Uh, this was just something that we, when we all met about this with Mr. Folsom and other department heads, um, we just felt like it needed to be done, just in case. Uh, there could be something that comes up when you're tearing something out. There could be something that comes up when you're doing an install, to where we want to make sure there's enough kind of leeways where we can do some of the maintenance that needs to be done. A contingency. Yes, sir.
Well, it's a contingency, but two, you know, when I first got here, early months, we had an issue with park maintenance. You know, some of our equipment being below par. Uh, so I, I take some of the blame for this, because we had some really serious issues with some of our park equipment needing to be maintained. So I, I think that some of these dollars can be, can help to get that equipment to where it should be and make it safe for our kids to play on, you know, some for contingency, but there are some maintenance issues that still exist.
Well, but the one point, the one point four was to enhance parks. Excuse me. Excuse me. There's no way we can take that sixty thousand and use it for park equipment?
You can, you can.
Um, because there's twenty-six thousand left over out of the budget. I'm looking at one million, three seventy-four, and we have one point four?
Six, yeah, one point four six.
One point four six. So, we have twenty, twenty-six thousand, four hundred left over. Plus, if we take this sixty thousand dollars, um, I've always stated that, um, I've never been against the dog park in Rogers Park. I just felt like, rather than doing one dog park, we could do two dog parks. And Mike, you're gonna get your dog park this time. Um,
Not for me, Mayor.
For, for, for your, for your area. So, we're almost at, um, it would give us eighty-six thousand, four hundred, where I think we could probably get another dog park somewhere else in, in the city, rather than taking that sixty thousand and using it on maintenance, which twenty-six thousand, four hundred left over would give us eighty-six thousand, four hundred, almost to the point of being able to afford another dog park. So, if we could squeeze another dog park in, yeah, we're a little short.
Sure, we, we can work on that too. But I, probably, it's Kenneth Regent, I know I don't want to put you on the spot, but you have anything that, Kenneth, because a lot of this responsibility is yours too now?
Can I ask Jimmy one question before Kenneth comes up? Jimmy, on the, uh, Imagination Station, you're gonna tear it completely down and replace it with new stuff?
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be wooden, or is it not? It's gonna be, okay, it's gonna be?
Something different.
Okay, okay. And about how long, you got a timeline on that deal?
With all of these, um, we're kind of at the mercy of the contractor. Um, tearing it down, we'd be doing that in-house, so just however quickly we could get it done, but as far as getting the install, you've got to order it. I mean, you've got to design it, you've got to order it. There's a lot of approvals that take place, and then shipping, as we know, it's, it's not fun right now.
So, when we do the, the, uh, the tear down, once the new equipment is on the way, are we gonna do that now? And I'm asking that to say, will the park be open while it's being replaced?
No. Well, the, it would be all closed off around the playground area.
I mean, but will they still be able to do like the walking track and stuff like that?
It depends on how invasive that, that stuff is.
Okay.
We're not gonna commit to that.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
I think with some of the funds, uh, we could use to upgrade the park benches, uh, picnic tables and things like that. We can also upgrade by, uh, adding more trees, shrubs to the area, even some, uh, color, if we would like. But, uh, most of the parks, a lot of the existing things that are around the parks need to upgrade as well. So, it's not just the playground equipment. So, we could use those funds for that. That's what I would suggest. Or even, uh, can even add extra swing sets uh, inside of the park, and that's something that we can do in-house purchase and put in ourselves. It probably costs around four, five thousand dollars, and you're gonna have four swings out there. That would actually be something nice for Babes of Harris, I think, instead of a full-fledged park, myself.
Question on that. Um, so, thank you for saying that. You know, when you go to Academy, you can look at their top-of-the-line playground equipment. I know it's not really commercial, it's residential, but their top-line playground, cause like thirty-five hundred dollars, and it has swings and a slide, the climbing tower, the whole shebang there. Uh, is something like that, could that be considered at Combes Park as opposed to fifty thousand dollars for new playground equipment, or could you just put in some swings and a slide of a the commercial nature at Combes Park instead of?
A commercial swing and slide, we could do. I wouldn't do a little, uh, something for like a caddy.
So, a commercial swing and slide, how much does something like that cost?
I think, uh, speaking with Milton, uh, the park superintendent, uh, it's around four to five thousand dollars, and we can actually put that in ourselves.
So, that kind of gets back to the question that Councilman Turner was, was asking you at Combes Park. It's a little bitty neighborhood park with like two or three parking spaces. Would it be acceptable to just put in some swings and a slide there for that little neighborhood? As a neighborhood park as opposed to, I, I don't know what you're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars on over there.
I think it'd be a nice upgrade, so whatever council wants to do is what we'll do. But I think that would be a nice upgrade for it. Another thing we'd like to look at too in parks, uh, you know, I just got over there, so still going through all of the ins and outs of, uh, the way it runs and the issues that we have. Uh, and there's not many issues in the parks, you know. A lot of the equipment is just coming to a time that it's aging out. So, we're gonna upgrade, uh, and put in a couple of new parks. But what I'm looking forward to doing is actually like, uh, any of the components that we can say paint ourselves in-house. We're gonna paint them, and that'll make a nice upgrade. We already did one rock wall, came out beautiful, and, uh, so by doing that, I think we can save a lot of money and still upgrade our parks, where we're not able to spend the money right now, but we're able to fix them up.
That gets to the notion of maintenance that the city manager was talking about, you know, if you, if you maintain something, just like your own house. If you don't paint your house, you're gonna start getting rotting wood, and you're gonna get leaks, and you know, it all deteriorates, but if you maintain it, it can last for a really long time.
And that's what we're gonna do when we put in those new parks. We're gonna make sure that we're on top of the maintenance, and we get the full lifespan out of it.
So, Mr. Regent, you're saying instead of spending the fifty thousand dollars at uh, Combes, we could probably do twenty-five thousand and still have, nice swing sets and?
It'd be a nice upgrade, twenty-five thousand, that'd do a lot for the park. If we want to allocate money somewhere else, I still think, uh, putting in that, uh, the new swing sets or the, whatever we can give for twenty-five thousand is gonna be a great upgrade. It's not a new park, but it's a great upgrade.
Because you're saying five thousand dollars for swings and, and a slide?
Not necessarily a slide, just a swing set.
Just a swing set. So, if you can do a swing set for five thousand, if we did too, that's only ten thousand.
That's what we're looking at.
And then you could probably do a jungle gym or something else.
There's a lot of things we can look into and work around it.
Oh, I can make some money stretch, I promise you.
There you go. And we needed to stretch, cause we got a lot to do.
So, I mean, and the sole purpose of being there is, is, because it's a neighborhood park.
Yes, ma'am.
And to the, to the public and to the audience, there's a difference between a neighborhood park and a public park. Because neighborhood parks normally don't have all of the amenities.
Correct.
As a community park. But, that would give two, possibly three different, um, sets. Yeah, upgrades. And then it would free up some money to do something else. Because I'm at eighty-six thousand, four hundred, and you give me another twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm at a hundred, I'm at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars now, a- and, um, I mean, tha- tha- that's another hundred and eleven thousand dollars that can be stretched out somewhere.
Yes, ma'am, definitely.
Do we need to amend this motion if we're gonna do something like that and take money away from some of the proposed projects and?
So, the, the motion, uh, the ordinance isn't allotting any funds, it's just allotting projects to be done. And I think that the, the printout was to kind of show you how the, the monies, um, or the quotes that have been received. But the resol- but the resolution is just to allow for the things listed, the Central Park, Charlott Park, the Combes Park, the golf course, Sprott Park. We've amended it to now remove Central Park and only be Magnolia Park, cause that was discussed. Um, the turf, the Babes of Harris, the athletic complex, the dog park, and then the general maintenance. So, if they're adding items, if you're adding something else, you have to be cautious that some of it wasn't posted in the memo. Um, so, we can obviously approve it, and then if there's something that you want to sub- come back with, we can amend the item later after it's been properly posted.
Got a question. So, so basically, we can actually approve it, but similar to what the mayor's saying, kind of reduce the price, staff can choose that we can approve it, correct?
What you're approving today is the projects at these particular parks. And so, I'm just gonna use Combes Park, since that was a lot of conversation there, and it says playground installation. Council hasn't committed to what type of playground installation. There's no funds committed. You haven't approved a design for it. You're just saying you want to see something there. So, whether you want to see a swing set or a full-out blowout thing, that's yet to be determined. Same thing with Babes of Harris, you haven't, you're just saying you want to see some improvements in that area, and obviously staff has the ability to, to come back with some, some modifications if necessary.
Okay, I understand, and I just wanna, I am in agreeance with the mayor that we can approve it and scale back in some of those areas and get more bang for our buck. I think it's important to understand, in the past, the city's operated with a hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget, and now we're at one point four six million, so we're trying to get the most out of that that we can versus what we have done, you know, continuously in the past. And one more, one more question to Kenneth Williams. With your experience, is, uh, cause I know prior to pushing for a park budget increase, I wa- I was asking you, like, how did y'all normally do things, and how have you seen things done in other cities, like, you know, how did we get park, how did you get park improvements? How did you allocate budgets? How did you do big things? Cause right now, we're doing things and it's improvements, but it's small improvements. How do we get to the point where we do big, major improvements?
And, and that's a good point. At some, at some time, council's gonna have to make some decisions to do bigger projects, to get a bigger bang for your buck, and to do major things. You know, you might wanna, uh, whatever it may be, you might want to create new parks, uh, uh, that's gonna cost a lot of money. So, at some point, you're gonna have to look at, uh, if you're willing to issue more debt, uh, issue more money, issue a bond, uh, to fund multiple large projects. It's more than just the, these small projects. So, basically, you can either do that through, uh, one council can approve a bond, a CO, to go out to do that, or you can take it to the voters. You can come up with a slate of projects that you identify. Uh, most of the time, it, there are projects that are identified from plans that we put together, like the strategic plan, the downtown plan, and all those become a list of projects that you choose from to put on a ballot or some, or however, how you choose to fund it. I see that in Beaumont's future, uh, if you're gonna make substantial progress with large projects, uh, going forward to do that. Uh, and again, that, this is, you know, while this one point four million is, is kind of a small list of projects to get done this year, you know, and what we can't get done, we'll put in next year's budget, you know, you know, we'll, until we get the list completed, so. Don't feel like you have to get them all done right now. Get the ones you want done, the ones you, you identify are important. And then we start the new budget process. These become a part of that process, uh, but also we'll have a discussion, we can have a discussion about bonds and park bonds and what that means during the budget process too.
What, um, Councilmember Gates, if you'd just allow me to make this comment. Um, we have a list of parks and projects, um, that we're, we're working with, and there are some parks that um, are not even listed on this list, so we really have, we've gone from a hundred and thirty-two thousand, which was, we're, we're spending, um, say, on the golf course drainage study, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That would have taken the entire budget that we had previously, to now, we're looking at one point four million, and we're able to uh, touch about fifteen different um, projects. And so, that's, that, that's a big jump from what we've had and what we've done in the past. Councilmember Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just kind of following what, uh, Mr. Williams was saying. We are looking at a drainage study for the golf course at Terrell Park, but to actually redo the golf course, once we get that drainage study and it tells us what we need to do, you're looking at a much bigger number, so that's the kind of things, uh, to, to make that a really quality golf course would be something I think we would all love to see, and I've said for many years that Terrell Park really could be our version of Memorial Park in Houston, and we need to, you know, think about that, and a lot of dead trees out there that need to be taken down and replanted. A kayak launch, uh, so that we could use Hildebrandt Bayou and, uh, have that paddling trail opened up. Lot of things out there. One other thing I wanted to mention, while you're uh, looking to save money on some of these projects, and I think that's great, there is one unfunded thing that I gotta keep coming back to, and that's the Magnolia Park maintenance and equipment. We need to make sure we save some money to pay for that, because that's something that really needs to be done out there.
Cause that pool is really, really, really used.
Yeah, and Ken- and Kenneth, I know you knew to this situation, there's also a slide out there at Magnolia Park that's, I don't know if it's still up at the pool, but it's been out of service for quite some few years, and I think we need to either, it needs to be removed, or it need to be repaired, but we can't just keep it out there and those kids looking at it and they can't utilize it, so we need to kind of make a decision and do one or the other with it. I would like to see those kids be able to use it.
All right.
Councilmember, I think you put money in this year's budget to do that work, a hundred and twenty thousand or so. So, there's money allocated, we just need to get it done, i- if that's what you choose to do with the money, or you could move it to do the pool.
I just want to make sure it's done. Those kids ask all the time. That's why I want to make sure, yeah, we all on the same page, but appreciate you.
Okay, any other comments? So, uh, we have a motion and second on the floor, discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. We have the reading of item number six, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Count, uh, I'm sorry, consider supporting Abiding Grace, a proposed housing tax credit HTC project located northeast quadrant of Cortno Drive and Fanet Road. Acknowledging that the proposed project is located in a census tract having more than twenty percent housing tax credit units per total households. Acknowledging that Beaumont has more than twice the state average of units per capita supported by tax credits and offering express support for the project and a commitment of funding in the form of a fee waiver not to exceed five hundred dollars. Council heard presentations on last meeting on the, uh, this particular project, along with the next one that's coming up. And, uh, we're looking for, uh, a recommendation, uh, for approval of a resolution.
Thank you, you've heard the reading.
All right, so.
You've heard, you've heard the reading of item number six, Abiding Grace. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second? You're gonna second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. May I have the reading of item number seven, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider a resolution supporting Trinity Crossing, a proposed housing tax credit project located at eleven twenty-five North Eleventh Street. Acknowledging that Beaumont has more than twice the state average of units per capita supported by tax credits and offering express support for the project and any commitment of funding in the form of a fee waiver not to exceed five hundred dollars. Again, this is, uh, the second of the two tax credit proposals you heard la- last week, and uh, they're seeking approval of a resolution.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a item number seven, Trinity Crossing Housing Tax Credit Proposal. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to pose to, uh, staff. Again, my concern and my question is, uh, by
Again, my concern and my question is, uh, by, um, this is the second time Abiding Grace has come because last time they were knocked off. Uh, I guess they didn't get the sufficient points to move forward with the project or to be chosen. Am I correct about that?
I think he said last meeting that they had a proposal that came in that received more reports than them at the last minute. They, they didn't account for, um, at the state level, that they didn't go through the local level process. They applied at the state level and they came in with more points awarded to them at the state level.
Right. So this is their second time coming. Uh, well, the, the previous vote, they had been backed because the competition in other areas of the state knocked them out.
Correct.
Okay, and.
I'm sorry, they just, they passed it out. It's something else.
Uh, oh, okay. So my question is, are we certain that this will, by, uh, supporting, giving support to both, will not inhibit the other?
So they.
Yeah, real quick, I'll just let you know that, that TDHCA posts applications at several stages of the process. And those, those can change. And I think we heard testimony last week that somebody came in at the last minute or somebody dropped out at the last minute. So the last time we looked, in terms of who was applying in Region Five Urban District, which is ours, was Beaumont Crossing, Heritage West, Abiding Grace, and a Pioneer Crossing on US two eighty-seven. And now, we were informed by ITEX that Heritage West was pulled. Um, I don't know about Pioneer Crossing two eighty-seven. That may have been the one that was discussed last week. But that's, that's all we know is what TDHCA tells us.
So there's a scoring, a local scoring, and then there's a state scoring. And so the local scoring, if, uh, council provides a resolution for both, would give them both equal points of seventeen. And so then they're again scored at the state level based on a separate criteria, including whether or not they got the support at the local level.
Any other discussion? Mayor Protim Duria.
If I'm not mistaken, I think at the last meeting that Abiding Grace asked for our exclusive support.
So I, I believe that Abiding Grace asked for exclusive support and Trinity was asking that they both be supported.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Trinity has his hand.
I'm sorry, have you come to the podium?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, my name's Adam Horton and I do represent this project specifically that you're talking about. And the reason we come to ask for support for both projects is, as we know, as they go through that TDHCA process, applications can get kicked out for any number of reasons. Uh, it can be a simple thing that's missed on the application. It can be a developer itself is disqualified. And so by lending support to both projects, you give greater insurance that, that you guys will receive a project in your city. If you exclude, if you choose to exclude, uh, exclusively support one project, and that's within your right to do, and that project for somehow may have a mistake in its application, or that developer has some other issue, then you lose out on the chance to get a project in Beaumont. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that that's why we're asking for, to, to support both projects is it does greater your chances to get a project in the city, uh, of Beaumont.
Councilmember Phil Shar, Councilmember Samuel.
Does supporting both projects, again, does one jeopardize the other?
There will only be one project supported, probably, the allocation of funds. TDHCA gets a bucket of credits and it's, you know, he mentioned, uh, Urban Five, they get a set amount of credits. And the credits that are allocated to Urban Five probably only allocate one project going to get funded. But if you support one, but supporting both of them doesn't give any disadvantage. It's kinda just saying you equally support both of them. There are other scoring metrics that TDHCA will go through and they'll pick the project based on those metrics, um, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes. Mine is not a question to him. Mine is a statement of my position. Um, this is a second te- well, these two are totally different. One, one is from Beaumont, the other is not Beaumont. It's, it's not from Beaumont. And secondly, uh, one has been through the process before. And because of the way that the scoring is, whatever that may have been, uh, by supporting two, yes, we may be able to give, uh, more, uh, validity to at least one being awarded to this district. Maybe not. But I know one that has shown and has a proven commitment to the area because there have been other projects that have come through and been successful. And they've also failed to get the, uh, the project before, but that did not stop them. So I, I understand you wanting both to be, uh, awarded. And there's nothing to say that by us doing both, uh, given everything equal, it could come out to either one of you. But I just want it to be known that I've seen what has happened in the past and based on that, I'll make a decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Gates, Mayor Protim Duria after that.
I think that, uh, the, uh, Trinity Housing Development has also done something here locally as well. Uh, over behind, uh, One City Church, is that?
Correct. We just completed Beaumont Trails. It's in the process of leasing up, uh, currently.
Okay, and that, as I understand it, is a, a very nice project. And another thing that I think we need to keep in mind, this project that they're looking at doing for Trinity Crossing, um, is on the side of the Old Castle Motel, which the city demolished and then had to put a demolition lien on. And they have guaranteed us that should they be selected, they will pay that off. And I don't wanna lose that money, uh, if that opportunity presents itself. So, uh, yeah, I, my, my position is we should, we should support both of them and, uh, then let the state decide whatever criteria they have to, you know, apply.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Um, I just wanna say, Abiding Grace, they've done a lot of work over there in Ward Four, uh, Pearl Archer Neighborhood. And, uh, it's been very successful. And, um, I, I don't think they should be penalized because of, um, because of Castle, uh, Motel not paying, uh, their lien or whatever. Also though, also wanted to say, um, do, did, can you explain the deal? Y'all really, y'all don't own the property right now, do you?
Correct. We have a purchase, and a purchase option to purchase the contract should we be awarded the tax credits. And then that's how the whole lien gets paid off in that process. So we do not currently own it. That's correct. And if I could just make one other comment, if I'm, if I'm not out of place. I think, you know, we again would encourage you to support both of them. It increases the chances that you guys for sure get funded. I do think both projects are great projects. It would be great to see both of them funded. I think we'd be willing to commit, um, if we get a resolution of support and are fortunate enough to win, uh, the TDHCA funding, that we would not come back to the city of Beaumont next year for a resolution on any other project. We would kind of sit out a year and that would hopefully enable what other proj- what, whatever project didn't get funded this year, maybe to get funded next year and both of them get funded. Since we do believe they are both good projects and both developers are good developers.
Councilmember Turner.
The project that y'all recently did, y'all did that one without funding? That the project y'all recently did behind One City Church?
No, we had received tax credits from TDHCA as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
On these, one other, on these type of projects, you say tax credits, how many dollars are we talking?
Uh, I think, I don't know the exact number. I think there's around eight or nine hundred thousand allocated to this region and that's a yearly credit for ten years. So it's an injection of close to ten million dollars of equity that comes in through, um, the tax credit program. So it's a pretty big investment, um, in the city of Beaumont for either project.
Councilman, I think our region has allocated one million, six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Every year?
For ten years. So that'd be a ten million dollars of credits. And they, the, the equity that comes in is anywhere between eighty-five to ninety cents for those credits. So it's an eight or eight and a half to nine million dollar investment from a tax equity perspective.
Any other comments? All in favor, please. Thank you, sir. I'm so sorry. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose? The motion failed.
Can I get a hand count?
Aye, aye.
Okay, the motion failed. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the first work session?
Thank you, Mayor. Reviewing and discuss water and sewer revenue fund balance and operations. Uh, uh, our chief financial officer, uh, is gonna, uh, give a presentation to you on some things with our fund balance and some possible ways to, uh, increase revenues for the city. Uh, one of the things I want to do was be creative and find such ways and, and Todd went out and, and evaluated and looked at some things. So I think he has some worthwhile things to talk to you about and, uh, maybe get some consideration for you on some of the things.
Right, thank you. Mayor and council, if you remember, um, during the budget process last year, we had lengthy discussions about, you know, um, fund balance requirements of the Water Utilities Fund, the revenues and the operations of that fund. And, um, you know, council did approve a rate increase, but we did tell council at the time, even though we did a rate increase, we had more work to do in that fund to, uh, basically strengthen that, the financial integrity of that fund, you know, um, out of our own wishes and also, you know, some key metrics that bond rating agencies use to evaluate. It's like when we just issued our twenty-five million dollars. So just to recap some of that, that we discussed in that work session is currently the Water and Sewer Fund has a fifteen percent minimum fund balance requirement, and that's fifteen percent of its annual expenditures. And we told you at the time that we would like to work towards increasing that minimum fund balance from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent. And that would probably take a, a process of two years. And again, uh, we thought it was necessary to increase that minimum fund balance. Um, you know, to meet the key metrics that bond rating agencies use to analyze, you know, our, our ratings and just to ensure the financial integrity of, of that fund. And just to give you a little history on the fund balance in that fund, in fiscal year nineteen, we had a thirty-one percent fund balance. And then in fiscal year twenty, we had a thirty-three percent fund balance. And then in fiscal year twenty-one, it fell down to twenty-four percent fund balance. And what caused that drop was we had over one point eight million dollars that were captured in a special revenue fund that related to Tropical Storm Amelda expenses that we were hoping we would get approval from FEMA and they would reimburse us those expenses. They denied all of the FEMA requests for the entire state. So, so the water fund had to make an immediate transfer of one point eight million dollars into that special revenue fund to cover those, uh, Tropical Storm Amelda expenses. And then, you know, and then since then, we've been hit with COVID and inflation, um, you know, throughout all of our funds. So currently, currently, we're at about, we're estimating to end this year at approximately a, a twenty percent fund balance. So, um, if you go ahead and go to the next slide. So some steps that we can take immediately to improve the fund balance and, and, you know, the revenues and the financial integrity of the fund is, we have something that's in process already. This is just one idea. You know, until recently, everyone who made a water utility payment online with a credit card or a debit card, you know, there's a, there's a merchant fee associated with these online transactions. And that, that merchant fee is passed to the city currently. That's not industry standard. Industry standard is to have these convenient fees, um, paid for by the consumer. So we do have a platform out there right now that it is live. It's a soft live. Um, we're gonna go hard on it on March fifteenth cuz that, that's when we're gonna shut down our current platform. And you can see the fees to use this new platform on the screen above. But there's, there's been a lot of confusion on who's gonna pay a fee and who's not going to pay a fee. So I just wanted to try and clear up that confusion. If, if you were paying your water bill online, say, two months ago, and you wanna continue paying your water bill online with a credit card, you will now receive a fee, you know, in accordance with that schedule as you see. But if you were paying your water bill by any other method, you will not receive a fee. You're only paying a fee when you go through the website and, um, initiate your payment through our website, which is at, I believe it's at Beaumont dot first billing dot com. And so we've sent out, you know, press releases. I think today, we sent out a frequently asked questions, um, press release also to hopefully try to clear up some of that confusion. I have other points, but at any time, if you have questions, yeah, go ahead.
So many of my constituents were losing their minds because they had already set up through their bank an automatic, uh, draft out of their bank as, as I have, you know, so. Um, that way I know that my bill is gonna be paid timely because you guys are gonna just take it right out of my bank account.
Right.
And as long as I've got money in my bank account, my water bill's gonna be paid.
Right.
So, uh, that's not gonna incur a fee if you do it that way, right?
No, sir.
Okay, just wanna make that clear for everybody. Uh, you can do that way. You can also, uh, mail them a, mail in a check. Uh, there's not gonna be any fee that way. You can come to a window and pay with either check or cash. There's not gonna be any fee that way.
Correct.
So that there are alternatives to avoid incurring the fee.
Right. We also have a drop box outside of City Hall. People can drop off a payment. Um, like you said, you can do an auto draft through the city where we draft your account. No fee. You can also do it through your own bank. It's up to your bank if they charge you a fee. But the only people that are gonna pay a fee for this new platform is if they go to that website and initiate a P, a fee through that webs- or a, a payment through that, uh, platform. Those are the only people that are going to incur a fee.
Got it.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner.
And the second question, uh, for me is, Todd, eh, I know we said it's not standard. At what point did we realize that we needed to make this change cuz we wouldn't operate in standard with the fee, with us eating it and not the citizen?
So believe it or not, this process have already, we're probably close to our third year of trying to implement this. We, we, we started implementing this prior to COVID. And then when COVID hit, a lot of companies, you know, they were working from home. It stalled the entire process. So it was probably two and a half to three years ago when we were trying to move to this platform, but it's just stalled mainly due to COVID and, um, the, you know, the response team from, from First Billing. And, um, you know, as stated in the slide, it should save the city at least three hundred thousand dollars a year just in the Water Utilities Fund. The plan is to go citywide with this. So we'll go to municipal court with it eventually. We'll go to the landfill with it eventually. Everything will go to this platform eventually if people wanna pay online. So it's going to save the city a lot of money. We're just starting in the water customer service area first. Other steps we can take, um, currently, we have a contract with the state prison system and they receive a twenty percent discount on sewer services. We were able to locate a contract last signed in, uh, two thousand and eight and it renews itself every year. The problem is, is that the contract does not mention a twenty percent discount. Um, to my knowledge, that twenty percent discount has been offered probably as long as I've been here, seventeen, eighteen years. My, I hate to make assumptions, but my assumption is that was probably some type of incentive for them to build that prison system out here, which we all gain from economically. But, um, I did reach out to the, the, uh, state prison system and asked them if they had a contract or some type of document on record that verifies that they should be receiving the twenty percent discount. They could not verify such discount. And so I think all it would take to move forward on this and collect another two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year is give them proper notice, whether it's thirty to ninety days, and say, hey, we're gonna start charging you the full rate. Now, we do offer them a discount because they're out of city limits. The contract does say we'll charge them an in-city limit rate. So we do give them that break already, but that's an option. If, if, uh, if I get the consensus that council wants to move forward with this, it wouldn't take any further action on, on your part. Sheree, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we could just move forward. Sheree, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we could just move forward with this by notifying the state prison system without Council action and move forward.
That's correct. It'd be a managerial decision, but I think it's just a notice to Council to get your buy-in on it.
We're good.
The only thing, and I'm just going to throw this out there, you know, it's a twenty percent discount. It's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That's about eighteen thousand dollars a month. I don't know what kind of pushback they would give after we give them notice, but I just wanted to put that out there. If y'all are ready to move forward with it, then that's what we'll do.
You need a consensus?
Yes, ma'am.
Todd, when you say day, can we be a little bit more specific? Can we be more specific?
It would be the state prison system.
Okay.
So, whoever makes, you know, decisions on their end, you know, everyone has a budget. We have a budget, so.
So, how long has this gone on?
Honestly, I don't know. I've only been in this position for six years. I know for sure we've been offering this discount as long as I've been CFO, but I talked to Annette in Water Customer Service. She's been here a lot longer than me, and I think she said it's been here since she's been here also, about, you know, twenty years.
Well, the last time I looked, I'm not sure that applies to them, but Texas state fund balance is pretty healthy.
Yeah, it's a real big rainy day fund. Absolutely. So, no one is saying otherwise that.
Okay, we'll plan to move forward with that then. The next one is, we do have an ordinance on our books where it says apartments and mobile home parks with four or more units are charged the monthly minimum fee for water and sewer for seventy-five percent of their units. So, I think that came about a while back from a prior Water Utilities Director. And the concern was, well, hey, all of our apartments aren't full. You know, we have vacancies, so why are we paying the minimum charge for vacancies? But we did do a survey of ten cities that are comparable to our size. We got responses from eight of them, and they were Round Rock, Sugar Land, Bryan, Wichita Falls, Abilene, Mesquite, Plano, and Waco. None of them offer this type of discount. So, if we were to remove that, basically, if we were to remove that ordinance and charge one hundred percent of the units for the monthly minimum, they're paying for all their water. So, we're not giving water away free, but we are missing out on the monthly minimum charge for, you know, a fourth of their units. So, if we did away with that, that would generate another seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of revenue per year. And so, if you were to say, what kind of impact is this going to have on, say, an apartment complex? I'll give you an example. So, if you have an apartment complex that has one hundred units, that means currently twenty-five of those units are not paying a monthly minimum charge, and that charge would come out to fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents a month. So, if you multiplied that by the twenty-five units that aren't paying their monthly minimum, that's about three hundred and eighty-seven dollars a month. So, that's a nice-sized apartment complex. So, if it's got a hundred units, taking away this ordinance would increase their water bill by about three hundred and eighty-seven dollars a month. And that's something that if we do get consensus from Council, we'll obviously have to bring this back in an agenda memo and have you vote on it.
Anyone object?
Todd, is this used as some form of incentive to get people to build out here? I mean, to your knowledge, is this something that was worked out prior to them putting it up and building it?
No, sir. I don't think this was an economic incentive for them to build because I think this was implemented under a prior Water Utilities Director that's been here during my tenure. And like I said, I think, I think his concern was when he was listening to these, I guess, apartment owners, they're like, hey, I'm not running a hundred percent vacancy. But I think that's different today. If you look around, you know, with the housing projects and everything that were just requested today, I think a lot of people are living in apartments now and they're not buying homes. And we think the occupancy rate in those apartment complexes and mobile parks is a lot more than seventy-five percent. They're probably a lot closer to a hundred percent, so. And like I said, these other eight cities that we surveyed, none of them offer this discount either.
So, Todd, do you think it's just something that's just been on the books and was overlooked and no one? I mean, it was just.
I don't think it's been a terribly long time. Like I said, there was a prior Water Utilities Director that's been here during my tenure. He's no longer here now, but I think he's the one who implemented this. So, it's probably ten to fifteen years old, maybe.
Okay. Okay, so no one's rejecting to any of it.
Okay. The next one, this is another ordinance we would need to bring back to Council and have you take a vote on, but there's, we have another ordinance that says annually the Water Utilities Director should basically look at our water and sewer tap fees and make sure they cover our cost plus ten percent overhead, and that's in ordinance. So, Mike will probably come up here and talk a little bit more about this, but he's the one who discovered this, and he looked at data from last year. And if we were to basically update our water and sewer tap fees to cover our cost plus ten percent overhead, it would probably generate another three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. But some of these increases that we would need to do would be, I think, pretty significant. So, Mike, did you want to add on to this?
Hi, good afternoon. Yeah, when we were looking through this revenue, like I said, we found this in the ordinance that these tap rates should be, like I said, increased annually for the simple fact of inflation and things of that nature. There's going to be a significant increase mainly in the sewer tap. Right now, our current price for a sewer tap is three hundred dollars. That's what we charge a person that comes to building codes, says, hey, I'd like to build a house. I need a new sewer tap. Our cost's three hundred dollars. That doesn't even cover half the material that we use on sewer tap. Looking at the material cost plus the labor cost, it's somewhere around eighteen hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-six cents. And that's with the ten percent increase as well, our overhead charge. So, you're looking at sewer tap going from three hundred dollars to eighteen hundred and twenty dollars.
Mike, when's the last time we raised that rate?
Not since I've been here. As far as in the position as Director, we haven't raised it before the end.
You'd have to look at the last ordinance to verify, but it's been a while.
Yeah. Right.
And how long have you been here?
Three years in the Director position. About two and a half, going on three years.
Mike, to make sure I'm following you correctly, you said you wanted to raise it from three hundred dollars to one thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-six cents?
Yes, or one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, just to round up.
That's roughly fifteen hundred dollars.
Correct.
How do you think the feedback from, you know, the people who utilize this service? How you think, tell me what's your opinion on the feedback on that? That's a pretty big jump.
I know it's a good jump. I mean, like I said, the thing is, our prices are just way under market. Other areas, and I don't have the data in front of me. I wish I'd brought it. You know, I did call, check around with other cities comparable, even cities around us, and, you know, that price is comparable. It's still a little cheap to what some of the other places. City of New Orleans, like I said, I don't remember the cost right offhand, but they would come in and depending on if it's under concrete, if it's in the street, if it's a long side, short side, I mean, they had so many different costs, but yet, I mean, it could go anywhere from fifteen hundred dollars to five thousand dollars, you know. So, like I said, having it this way, and this is kind of going with what the ordinance says, you know, cost plus ten percent.
Mike, this is on new construction, residential? Only residential?
Residential, yes.
Question, this is for the City Attorney. There is a prohibition against the city giving money, you know, gratuitously to citizens that, you know, we can't just give services and money away. How would it impact us to be able to basically be giving fifteen hundred dollars away every time somebody wants a sewer tap if we're not covering our costs?
So, and I want to correct myself earlier. Because the fees aren't listed in the ordinance, there's no way to determine when the last time we did the update, but Bart and I conferred, and we both agreed that it's been quite a while. But, so what happens is that if it's not adjusted and it's imprudent upon the city to kind of be financially prudent in adjusting it. So, right now, it's not constituted as a gift because we're not consciously giving it away. But now that Council is aware, then you have a fiduciary duty to adjust.
I agree with what Mr. Harris is saying, but I would like to see some of that data that you're talking about that shows other cities that are charging in that same realm.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't want to complicate this. I get it. Three hundred dollars is, that's ridiculous. I just wonder if we can't do this in increments, three to six to nine to twelve, until we get called up? Because it's, just to go from three to eighteen, it's, that's a little strong, but I just wonder if we can't phase this in over time.
Although I love your spirit. Unfortunately, that's not the way, that's not the way the ordinance is written. So, you would actually have to go in there and adjust your ordinance. And to go back to Councilman Getz's point, we already know what the cost is. So, you would then be consciously giving a discount on this service or giving a gift.
Just to, I mean, just to kind of go by what we're talking about, in February of twenty twenty-two, we lost fifteen thousand dollars at the water department putting in sewer services. In March of twenty twenty-two, we lost twenty-four thousand dollars putting in water services. Another fifteen thousand in April. So, I mean, every month, we take a loss on sewer services and water services. It's like I said, it's not just limited to the sewer services. Water services, a one-inch water service right now, our price is five hundred and forty dollars for the tap, service line meter. The new price would be looking at fifteen hundred and seventy dollars. And like I said, all these, all these prices are based on the cost of each part and material that we use, and we figured on the labor that it takes, and we went through our work orders, and we took average on our work orders on labor costs, and then plus the ten percent.
Councilman Turner?
Yeah, yeah, Mike, I agree. If possible, I would like to see some of those comparisons so we can make sure the community understand we're making decisions off factual data.
Right.
So, I appreciate that.
Right. And just to, just, you know, to add to, if we don't want to raise the rates or, you know, get comparable to what we're looking at here, we're going to have to go through, vote, and change the ordinance because, like I said, this is, as Sheree said, this is what the ordinance says. So, this is kind of what we need to stick by. And like I said, if we don't want to go this route, then we're going to have to come through and change the ordinance.
So, this is one of those items where it doesn't really require Council action because it's already been ordained by ordinance. This is one of those things, like, just so you know. So, if Council is not, is thinking going to have a lot of heartburn about it, then Council would need to notify staff that they want to either repeal or adjust that existing ordinance because it's already on the books.
Mike, this is a one-time fee?
Yes, it's just one time.
By a contractor, builder?
Home builder, homeowner, someone buys property and, like I said, building a house, this is the one-time fee for the tap.
Shit, it's going to be passed on to the homeowner.
Well, I get it. I know we need to cover our costs. That's just good business, and I get that. And so, I understand. I just hate it. But I appreciate you coming up here, and I appreciate you giving out your cell phone number so all these people can call you instead of us, but.
Well, but if you're building a house in the scheme of things, if you're building a two, three hundred thousand dollar house, fifteen hundred dollars.
And, you know.
I mean, you want to save every, you want to save every penny, but when we haven't done it and.
I can't say this in an absolute, but I guarantee with the builder will pass the cost on to the.
Yes, they will. They'll pass it on without hesitation.
Exactly, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Go to the next slide. All right, so just those four items that we've talked about already, that would generate another one point six million dollars a year, which is equivalent to three percent of our budget of revenue for the year. But we do got some other ideas, so. Get through my talking points here. Okay, steps that we can take towards which will improve the efficiency and operations and financial strength of the fund going forward. We met a company at TML in San Antonio this past year, and we've been talking to them, and what they do is they can conduct a water and sewer billing audit in order to maximize billable revenue. So, this audit would search for lost revenue due to like faulty meters, billing errors, intrusion into the sewer system. And looking at their contract that they sent us, there wouldn't be a fee unless they recover revenue. And so, it's a contingency basis-type deal, and this is only one company we've looked at. We'll look at others, but their structure is, and they've done this audit on the city of Beaumont. I think it was back in two thousand and eight or something like that, a long time ago, but they have done it here before. But their current contract, their contingency is fifty percent of the revenue that they recover. They would want that for four years, and then after that, you know, all the savings would be kept for the city a hundred percent.
All right, so now I need to ask you some questions about this automated billing service that we went to with Johnson Controls several years ago. We were told we were losing money because there was leaks going on in our system that we weren't detecting that if we, and I'm looking at your next point too, that we would be able to, it would be so sensitive that you could detect when you would flush your toilet, is what we were told when their representative came up here. And since that time, I have not been able to go online to see if I have a water leak. I feel like that system was made with a lot of promises that haven't been fulfilled, and I'd like you to address that because, you know, we spent fifteen million dollars to automate all of our meters throughout the city. And, you know, I don't see where we're any better off, especially if you think that we still got these water leaks that are not being detected.
Yeah, so did you want to jump to that one before we finished?
Well, go ahead and finish, but I'm.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Either way you want to do it, but I don't know, I didn't know if Bart wanted to add something on to the audit before we move on to the leaks.
We've done this type of audit on the telecom side, and we've done it on the IT networking side. The company won't get any money unless they find savings. And, I mean, you had mentioned bringing in Johnson and Johnson. We replaced all the meters. That's been eight-plus years ago. So, all of those meters in the field are over eight years old, and water meters slow down over time. So, it's quite likely that we have meters that aren't recording as much revenue as they should be recording. So, this company will go through, not only look for billing issues within the electronic system. They'll take all that data down, chew through it all, look for any errors in there. But they'll also go out in the field, and they'll do spot checks of meters, commercial meters, residential meters in the field, and assess whether they're accurate or not. And they'll also, for any, we have a few contracts with outside cities where we take their sewer in per contracted rate. They'll put flow meters in and look and see whether the flow from those entities matches what the contractor rate is, or if it's, if they're basically paying for less than they should be paying for what they're sending into our system. So, this worked out to be a really good deal on the telecom side. We got significant savings and got that down. So, look forward to seeing what their results are on the water system.
Yeah, and I don't know what they will find on the meter side as far as accuracy, but we finished, I think, the installation of those forty thousand-plus meters with that automatic meter reading system in two thousand and fifteen. And for the next seven years, when we were paying on that contract. And for the next seven years, when we were paying on that contract, that was part of their obligation, was to come in and do a random sample for meter accuracy each of the seven years, and they didn't find any discrepancies on any of those meters for those seven years, although that expired in twenty twenty-one. So we've had two years since then. So they might find some faulty meter readings today. I, I would say the probability of that's probably pretty low since it's, it's only been two, two years since we've been audited by the company that installed those, you know, forty thousand-plus meters.
So can you speak to the leak detection system not being used to maximum capacity now?
Yes, sir. So, so part of that fifteen million dollars that you said included these ten thousand, seven hundred sensors that are placed throughout the, just, the distribution lines throughout the, the city. And in their, in their analysis in the beginning, they said if you use your leak detection system over the seven years, it's going to save the city one point seven million dollars in lost revenue. This is their engineers that came up with, with these numbers. I'm just repeating them for you. So we have the leak detection system in the ground. We've had turnover, obviously, in the water department, even all the way up to the department director level. So a long story short, even though the system's been in the ground since two thousand and fifteen, I don't think it was ever fully utilized because no one was properly trained on it. Now, I know Mike has gotten in touch with the company that has installed those, those sensors into the ground, and I think he's got an update he can give you on, on that leak detection system and, and his plans going forward to utilize it.
Yeah, basically, the leak detection system has a two-part to it. One's the permanent leak detection that's located throughout the city in the meter boxes in specific locations, and there's also a mobile leak detection system that crews can go out and set up and actually try to detect leak, do more pinpointing of the leak. The leak detection system that we have, the permanent one that's out in the field, it gives you an area in between this meter, this meter, you know, we're picking up something. And then you go back out with this mobile device and able to pinpoint the leak more. And just like Todd said, once, you know, once they put it in place, they trained X amount of people, these people have long been gone, and like I said, it got to the point where no one, no one in the water utilities knew how to run, look at the system, to, to know where to leak at, where to look, what to even look for. We talked about this, like I said, back in December. I reached out to Johnson Control. They hooked me up with Itron, a guy named Eric. I then had two meetings with him to discuss the leak detection system. Honestly, it's very simple. I mean, it's really simple to read and simple to operate. So rather than us having actual, paying Itron to come in to do training sessions with our people, I have had, like I said, several phone conversations and some teams meeting with them to discuss how the leak system works, and then I'm going to pass that information on to our people from there. One of them is this only detects leaks.
I'm guessing this only detects leaks on the city side.
Correct.
So if your, if the leak is on the customer side, it's not going to help.
This is my understanding, that it only detects it on the water main itself, and it goes off of vibration. Like I said, we do have a number of the sensors that are out of service, so we will be going through and replacing these sensors to, like I said, be able to utilize this more.
Am I just remembering wrong, when Johnson Controls was here before, where they made representations that customers would be able to determine if they had a problem within their own service line? They, are you saying they've never made that representation? That, am I remembering that incorrectly?
So the prior Water Utilities Director, prior to Mark, I mean, Mike, and the prior CFO, to me, they're the ones who basically rolled out this program. But my understanding is that a water customer can go online and look at their usage, but it's only month-to-month. We have the ability at, in our offices here to look hour by hour. So the system does give the customer the ability to see if they have a leak, but unfortunately, it's month-to-month. They would have to call Water Customer Service if they assume they have a leak, and maybe get a, a day-by-day or even an hour-by-hour analysis to see, you know, when their water is leaving their, the pipes. So...
So if the technology exists for us to be able to know that information here at City Hall, what would it take for customers to be able to get that information when they are in their home on computer? What, what type of upgrade of software would that be?
Yeah, that would probably be up to the, the firm that installed the system to see if, if that's some type of access we could issue to the water customer, because I know they have to do it online. We're doing it, I guess, I'm not a technologist.
Here, here comes I T behind you.
The, the portion, the portion for the citizens to log in and look at the leak detection was a separate portal that we did not pay for. That was how, wait, how many years did we say? Eight years? We would have to go back to the vendor and see what their options are now.
Okay, so I, I did remember correctly that technology does exist. That was part of the sales pitch. We just did not pay for it.
Correct. That is, that is the answer I'm getting.
We already have one mic down. Can you be careful?
You're supposed to be conservative, Mike.
And I, and I don't know if cost was a factor. I wasn't part of that, that team. But I know this, our reports in-house also tell us if there's a regular use. So in other words, if they have a, a leak, and the, the use is a lot higher than normal, the system generates reports and says, hey, customer A B C has now, has excessive water use.
Do we, do we then call the customer and say, hey, you might want to check and see if your water, water tap is on?
Yeah, do we look out for them, yeah.
That is protocol?
That, that is protocol. I'd have to verify to make sure they're, they're still doing that. But I know the system does tell you if there's a no reading, you know, there's no water being used, and it tells you, you can set the parameters, from what I understand, you can set the parameters to say, hey, if it's ten percent more than what they usually use, give me, give me an alarm, twenty percent. I'm not really sure on that part, but I know the system can generate a report saying you might want to check out these accounts.
Please check on that, because I know I have rental property that I had an incident where, yeah, the toilet was just running around and running, got a very large phone, a very large water bill, never got a phone call, so please, please do that.
One other thing I was going to say about the leak detection system, that we are looking to have staff trained on it, probably within the next three months, and like I said, start changing these sensors out to where we can utilize it. So also on the leak detection you were talking about, I was going to say, unless it's leaking through a toilet, you know, majority of the time, a, a citizen sees water in their yard, they call us three-one-one, and we go, usually go out and check. And like I said, we can make the determination, okay, is a leak on the citizen, you know, are you getting billed for it? Or whether it's on the city, or if it's even a leak at all, you know, so.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking of how much easier would it be if the first thing that the city, the citizen does is, you know, look online and say, oh, I've, I've, I've got, the meter is running, I've, I've got a big problem here.
Except for the case where, like I said, if it's leaking through a toilet, then, you know, it's kind of harder to detect.
And even on those systems, if, say, if I was on a system, a system I was on, if, if I was having a leak at my house now, it would give me, send me an email or text to me sitting here and tell me I was having some water running, abnormal water running. We have to look at the software.
Yeah, so Kenny, that's what I was going to ask. Can we figure out something along the lines of the magnitude with that? Because I, you know, even, that would avoid the whole leak adjustment and some of the other issues we've been dealing with currently with the city, you know. So I think if that's a proactive way, we can notify the citizen before that bill gets outrageous, and we can avoid that.
Take a look and see what that would mean for, if it's available for software to, to do that. But it, it's really helpful, and, you know, people look at it and they say, well, you ran your sprinkler at this time every day, and it gives you a warning, so it makes it easy to, to resolve issues.
Hey, we have one final idea, so this will be the seventh. And I will say, out of the seven ideas, all of these ideas were discussed with our rating agencies prior to the issuance of that last bond, and this is the one that they felt was the most important. But what we would like to do is we would like to do a water and sewer rate study, which would accomplish those following bullet points. So the first one being, we want to propose, we want to get proposals from a firm that analyzes our rates to give us basically a five-year rate schedule that supports a five-year capital plan and operational plan. So as you can imagine, that's going to be pretty extensive, so we're going to have to be forecasting how much money we're going to spend operationally, and, you know, with capital improvements-wise over the next five years. And then this firm, we're looking at three of them already, you know, they would take that information and propose a rate schedule over the next five years, you know, to suggest rate increases. So rather than doing it year by year, which the way we've been doing it, we know in advance, you know, what our rate increases should be from one year to another. The next one, we have different rates for water services versus sewer services. And I don't know the last time that these rates have been analyzed in this capacity. Each year, we just come to council and say, hey, we need a three percent rate increase, four percent, whatever the rate increase is, and we just apply that percentage to the water, apply it to the sewer, apply it to all the different meter sizes and, and go about. But it would be nice to, to know or have information that substantiates, what's our cost for water? What's our cost for sewer? And have rates that match it, because not everyone has water. Some people just, well, not everyone has sewer. Some people just have water. Some people have irrigation systems, so the cost should match the, the fees. The next one is to basically determine appropriate rates for various meter sizes. So again, in the ordinance, we have, I don't know, probably eight to ten different meter sizes, from five-eighths inch up to whatever, maybe four inches. But we have different rates for each meter size. So again, it would be nice to have a firm come in and analyze it and justify a rate for each meter size. Same thing with rates for inside-city limits versus outside-city limits. Right now, our outside-city limit is just a hundred and fifty percent of our inside-city limit. It would be nice to have some kind of, you know, logical connection between the two, so they would look at that also. Another thing that a lot of people are looking at, maybe not necessarily in our area of Texas, but in, you know, central and north Texas, water conservation, you know, how much do we charge per thousand gallons of water? And is it the more they use, the more we charge, or is it, it just depends on what your goal is? So we would like them to come in and look at how much we're charging per thousand gallons. You know, our top water users are refineries, they're hospitals. I don't think they have water conservation in, in mind necessarily, so it would be nice to have a firm come in and look at it and try to optimize, you know, what rates we charge per thousand gallons, you know, knowing we want to keep the first few thousand gallons as low as possible, you know, for, for our residential customers who can't afford a rate increase. But anyway, they would come through and, you know, analyze that for us also. And then finally, you know, all of this is, you know, most of these fees are covered in chapter twenty-two of the Code of Ordinances. There's a lot of ancillary charges, you know, disconnect fees, shut-off fees, reconnect fees. Have them look at the entire chapter twenty-two and look at all of our fees, you know, for water and sewer, and, you know, make sure they're where they need to be. And June, did you have anything you want to add on that one? I know you kind of looked at some of these companies. But again, we're looking at three companies right now. We've got proposals in, so staff's going to meet, analyze them, and, you know, probably come to council in the future and, and recommend that this goes through. And that, I think that's the end of my presentation, and y'all have any more questions?
Well, Todd, thank you so very much, and that's some significant savings that could be brought back into our budget. Absolutely. Any comments? Any questions? The city manager, thank you. Can you take us into this next work session, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Review and discuss the placement of a mural on the main street side of the Julie Rogers State Area, as well as the wall of the Lakeside Center that overlooks beautiful mountain skate park.
Mayor Muton, council, and Mr. Williams, I'm here to talk about fun and happiness and a free event called, called Mural Fest. It'll be the second annual. It'll be taking place March two through five, right downtown, at the Jefferson Theater and at, at the Art Museum, both indoors and outdoors. Yeah, this, this is the, the grounds. It's, they're going to be coming in on March second. The, the muralists, they'll be here through the fifth. There, there's going to be sixteen muralists that are coming in from out of town. Also, we have sixteen local artists, and everyone will be able to paint, both, both the locals and the muralists from out of town. Friday afternoon, B I S D is going to let their classes out early so they can come down here, so the kids can paint, so basically everyone can paint. The best thing about this event is it is a hundred percent free event. There's no charge for anything. And this is a, if you turn one more, this is, the muralist would want to paint on the, right by the skate park. You can see it's for a younger crowd. The average skater is from like nine to twelve years old. Those are superheroes on the left, and you can just see, that's a photo of a skateboarder on the right. So we just wanted to, just wanted to show you what we're, you know, what we're looking at for that, for that particular building. It'll be facing right at the, the skate park. And then the next slide, we are going to hold off until twenty twenty-four. This is the backside of the Julie Rogers Building. It was going to be three different panels. This was going to be the first panel, but I understand that Regina Rogers is not crazy about this, so that's one reason why we want to hold off until next year. So are there any questions I can answer? Also, Restaurant Week is going to start March second, and that'll run through the twelfth. So basically, it'll be two large events running at the same time, over, over a ten-day period for Mural Fest.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes, I'm, the first thing I thought about was, what would be the impact when you talk about the Julie Rogers, the historical significance and the character of the building itself? That kind of concerned me.
Well, that's, originally, there was a plan for an outdoor-type mural, but then Mr. Rogers said she would want something that has more to do with the building and what takes place inside the building. So that's why we wanted to have like, you know, those are ballerina shoes, and the other, the other side would be some type of musician when that takes place. And in the right-hand side would have something to do with theater. But this, we're going to hold, definitely hold off on this until a future year.
Okay. Now, I know that, okay, there's no historical significance to the Julie Rogers.
Well, this is, this part of the building is an addition, so I think the Historical Commission was spoken to, and they said that would not be a problem to paint on this side of the building.
So Dean, did y'all ever consider just actually painting on the building since it's in, a, a new addition, and it's not the historical portion of it?
I'm not quite sure. Did we ever consider just painting on the building?
Right, like.
Well, that white is, is a primer, and once you have it.
Oh, that is the building. I thought, it looked like a screen.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the top, that's the top of the building, because, yeah, once you, once you, all the, all the buildings will be primed. That gives it, that'll double the life expectancy.
Okay, right there.
There we are.
So it would appear to be a screen?
No, 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 no. That will, that will basically mostly all be covered, covered up. You won't see the white. That would just, that is just, that's the primer. That's the primer.
Okay.
Yeah. But see, we're looking at possibly three different panels. But that's for upcoming years.
Councilmember Phil.
First of all, I love the, I love this whole concept. I do, and I love what we've done before with the murals. And most of the time, I'm, well, all of the time, I'm assuming those were done on private property, correct? In the past?
That's correct.
And so, you know, but I love that. I do. My only concern was, as Councilman Samuel just said, about touching a historical building, and then, but you've answered that. But number two is painting city buildings like the Lakeside. But number two is, painting city buildings like the Lakeside, I know as a city, we try to be careful.
Right.
Who gets to decide what that painting will be? And, are we putting ourselves in a position where one group of our citizens will like it, another group of our citizens might be offended? You know, because we understand how controversial art can be.
Right.
What one person calls art, another person calls trash.
Right.
And so, do we as a city want to put ourselves in that position to start painting our buildings that are technically owned by our citizens? And how do we make those decisions?
Well, the first mural that was actually painted is on the side of the Civic Center. It was painted about seven or eight years ago. So, the issue why things have been moving so slowly over the years, on maybe getting one or two murals per year, is that you have to match the artist with the owner of the building. And I think we know that it's a pretty traditional ownership of buildings downtown. So that's why we brought in these people, this JJ from Austin, he has the muralists. They've met with the building owners. They've already agreed on what will be painted on their buildings. So, it took us about seven or eight years to get eight or nine murals. Last year, Mural Fest, I think we painted 10 or 11 murals. This year, there's planned for another dozen. So, but as far as painting on city facilities, it's basically whatever you all would decide. And like you said, some people think some art is great, some think, people think it's trash, so it's.
So you're saying that council would have to decide what murals went up?
On city property.
Yeah, we would ask for, we would ask for your approval. That's why, that's why I'm here. I just want to make sure everything's very transparent.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Gittes, then Councilmember Samuel.
Dean, I like the aggressive approach. I think it's pretty, you know, strategic that we actually got a private-public partnership to get some of these things done at a more rapid rate, versus the way we were doing in the past. Like you said, it kind of slowed down a little bit. And I do like the fact that the muralists actually work with the building owners to kind of get the concept and perception that they want to see on their building. And I do appreciate you coming to us to show us some of these, some of these things as well. So I appreciate the transparency, and I think, you know, the way you're doing it, we're moving in the right direction.
Thanks, AJ. I just want to tell you, when we were paying our local muralists, we were paying from like $8,000 to $10,000 per mural. But all these new murals are going to be less than $5,000. They're basically, you know, doing us a favor, and these murals are done in three or four days. I don't know if you've seen the mural over on the Richard Engineering. I met with the owner, I found an artist, I told him we would give him $2,000 to help. He's not asked for that money. I mean, that's a $50,000 mural, and we had no investment in it whatsoever.
And I'm glad you did that, because I had wanted you to speak to the dollar amount of the savings. That was going to be my next question, because I think a lot of people need to understand the financial obligation it costs to paint these large-scale murals on buildings. So I'm glad you just kind of mentioned that, the discount that the city actually is getting.
It's like we're paying off in pesos instead of dollars on this. I mean, it truly is.
Councilmember Gittes?
Well, I think that it's doing a lot to liven up and provide color into our city. I do kind of share some of Councilmember Felschall's concerns about going on city property, government property. The one that you talked about that was done eight years ago, it's pretty small, it's, that's the one that says the best thing apart of, you know, so, yeah, that's small. Some of these large things, are you asking us for a consensus today on the skate park building, or?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So, yeah, that, can you go back to that?
Go back to the skate park. I love it.
I would like to point out that that's an avatar in Roku from Dragon Ball Z.
See, I didn't even know that.
So, so Goku, so.
I mean, the kids relate to that, and they'll think you're cool and hip.
So Randy, Goku, that's Dragon Ball Z. That's like one of the most popular Trading Court games that the kids do, and, you know, they get excited about watching it. You know, it's Goku, Vegeta.
And so then, the Avatar is like more earthbound, so they're like different powers. So he was the one who was kind of like frozen and came back to like restore peace and order to the, to the world.
Oh, my God.
He's like the positive, the positive cartoon character.
Building, we just trying to help.
Chris?
Oh, I'll watch it.
And I watched the series. There are books.
You talking about the dragon, or that snake, or whatever?
So, so, no, no, so in the back, the guy with, he's wearing the Adidas, that would be the Avatar. And he's the Avatar.
The guy with eyebrows.
Right. And so, I'm disappointed that he didn't add Katara, but anyway. Because it's very male version. But the dragon is just kind of to tie it all in. Both of them kind of expand from a, almost an Asian descent theme, and the dragon is obviously important in their culture.
Chris?
Mayor, real quickly, when we were designing the skate park, we had planned to have some panels that would basically separate the skate park from what would eventually be the senior center, the Lakeside Center, to have some murals up. Obviously, cost issues prohibited that, so when we looked at the designing the Lakeside Center, we didn't want to do it. So again, we feel like this is a good opportunity to finally get, you know, get some artwork that would be appealing to the skaters.
Anybody object? Councilmember Samuel? Oh.
I didn't say that. One, thank you for what you're doing. I think it's wonderful for downtown. I did have one question.
Okay.
Okay, now, when you said invite students downtown to paint buildings?
No, they will be, they will not be painting any buildings whatsoever. We have eight cubes, or like, like large wooden boxes, and they'll be able to paint on those. They're going to be stationed around the Art Museum, outdoors. And we will have an outdoor tent if the weather is inclement weather.
Okay, I just wanted.
And also, I don't know if y'all have heard of the Art Car Parade in Houston? It's a week-long event where they paint all these cars. They are going to be bringing over a car that we're going to be able to, everyone can paint. I don't know if everyone can paint in that car, but that car will be painted. Hopefully, it'll be in the parade. So, there's a lot of people involved. Mendai has been a major driver on this, and he's asked for our help, and we just go in 100% when we go in. Thank you all.
You're good to go, Dean. Thank you. Okay, where are we? Okay, that concludes our general business for today. And at this time, I'm going to go to public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She'll call your name. When it's time for you to speak, the green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
Oh, Janelle Davis, 2650, and I cannot make out the address, I am so sorry, in Fort Worth, Texas. I'm sorry. Lou Meek Drive, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Short people, accommodating. Mayor Mouton, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Janelle Davis, and I'm the Executive Public Affairs Director for BNSF Railway. Pleasure to be with you today and visiting here from Fort Worth. I am coming to you today to ask for the council's consideration of an important issue facing BNSF Railway. Our company is constructing a new railroad connection track in south-central Beaumont, near Fannan Street, and this track will allow for BNSF to move freight more efficiently in accordance with our, in compliance with our common carryal obligations. Planning for today's project has been underway since 2019, and our company has invested considerable amount of resources to realize this project. We've taken several steps for the successful execution of our project, but there remains one outstanding item that we need to work with the city on, and that is the vacation of city property near the project location. While we, we understand that the council will approve our request to vacate the city property with the condition that BNSF provide pedestrian access across BNSF railroad tracks to the riverfront, which will, it's our understanding, will be redeveloped in upcoming years for recreational use. While over at BNSF, we certainly understand the city's interests in providing access to the riverfront in coming years. BNSF's track project had an anticipated completion date of December 31st of last year. That said, given the critical needs of the rail network and the considerable investment that we've made in this infrastructure project, BNSF needs to execute on this project expeditiously. We are asking the council to remove pedestrian access to the riverfront as a condition of our vacation request. Myself and my colleagues have been in contact with Mr. Williams and Mr. Boone and Ms. Reed, and discussed and offered guidance on how, the safest way to provide that access to the riverfront, given our railroad operations. And we remain committed to working with the city to make sure that your city, your citizens have that access to the riverfront in coming years. In recognizing the needs for added fluidity along the rail network, which you all likely know has been a major point of discussion at the local, state, and federal level, we ask again that the city allow us to move forward with this connection track project. So we look forward to working with the city further, so that we can both achieve what we are seeking to achieve, in that you all have access for your residents to the riverfront and for us to complete our project in a timely manner. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Can we put this on the agenda for further discussion at a later date in executive session, perhaps? Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you.
Shante Tebow, 5985 Navajo Trail, Beaumont, Texas.
I like what I see here. I like what I see. Welcome to Beaumont, Ms. Reed, mayor and council. I like what I see. I like to see people agree to disagree. I like what I see. Some others are gone. Moving on to the next, my husband and I, outside of real estate investments, have 360 photo booth machines that we rent out to parties. On Saturday night, I received a call from one of our employees. And he said, "Ms. Tebow, I can't stay here. The male want to smell is so loud." I asked him, I said, "I thought you were at Rogers Park." He said, "Yes, I'm at Rogers Park." I said, "And is the male want in there?" And he said, "Yes." And so I got up, and my husband got up, and we went there. And when we walked in the front door, it hit us in the face. The door was open, it was two adults in the door, and they, I said, "What's going on here?" You know, it was a sweet 16 birthday party. I said, "What's going on here?" You know, and I can be rude. And I said, "I have people working here, I have people calling me." You know, my husband and I had been busy all day, because our business goes from Beaumont to Lake Charles Baytown in Houston. We have 30 employees. And it was a worker there, he sat in the hallway outside the restrooms. And I said, "Listen." You know, I told the mom, I said, "You booked us, it's in our contract. Any illegal activity, any illegal drugs, any illegal anything, you know, we're out of here, you lose your money." She said, "Ms. Tebow, we're trying to get, you know, we're trying to get the persons out of here that's smoking the drugs in here." You know, but you can't see, because when I walked in, it was, it was black, neon lights going. You don't know who's doing what. So, I'm over the building, trying to find out who's doing what, since the mom, it seemed like she was worse than the kids. So, I'm in shock. I'm never at a loss of words. I was at a loss of words at what I smelled and saw in that Rogers Park Center. I've never seen it like that. And so, I told the mom, I said, "I'm gonna help you, you know, I'm gonna help you." I told my employee to get my equipment. I had to rent machines to spray that equipment down to get the weed smell off of it. And this was at a party that was 16 years and younger. You know, what in the hell is wrong with people? I counted at least three adults there, three. You know, I said, "You need to turn these lights on." And so, I got tired of talking, I made a call. And then, I said, "Listen, I'm gonna call you on FaceTime." And I did. I called the person back on FaceTime, and I let him see, you know. I'm directing kids to stop smoking dope. It's adults in the building. The person that I called is on FaceTime looking. I don't know what we can do about this, but it's bad. You know, that was bad, what I walked into. You know, my husband smelled it. He's law enforcement for the Department of Justice. He said, "I'm not putting that in my system, I'm not going in there." You know, I'm not going in there. It was that loud.
Ms. Tebow, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
And the city manager?
Good. After the meeting, could I get your name, contact information?
Sure. But I don't know what y'all gonna do. And it's not up to y'all. You know, it's not up to y'all. But, my, my career is trauma, and my mind goes to, what if somebody is laced? You know, one of these kids get the hold of this crap? You know? That's what my mind goes to. Alrighty.
Thank you.
James Eller, 35807 East Lucas Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Before my public comments starts, do you mind if I just address two things? Depending on the, well, I mean, everybody's been running over the timeline, so I'm just asking for a couple of seconds, just to address BNSF.
James Eller, you can go ahead and start the clock. You go ahead and start speaking.
Okay. I haven't started speaking yet. I need to get my things set.
Do you want me to restart?
As you approach the podium.
I'm coming to council today to file a grievance with my local government. Departments of this administration and council previously had a hearing where my property is brought into question, being a public nuisance. I brought two, up to two different properties owned by the same individuals, one commercial and the other residential located in the city of Beaumont. The city attorney made a comment that the owners of the properties are protected by the Supreme Court ruling against any actions brought forth by the city department, departments. My property applies under the same protections of the city as the Supreme Court ruling. As an artist myself, my freedom of expression has been hindered by the constant onslaughts of the city of Beaumont departments. While this other artist is given immunity from persecution and from any paperwork filed in complaints by citizens, the only difference is here, I feel, is based on race, because both of our properties share some of the same correct, creative expressions through art. And artistic creative creativity cannot be placed in the same box as another. However, I am the only property owner that is having to argue a defense. The council has failed to protect my freedoms under the pressure of alliances with the specific groups in this community. You don't, you don't have to agree with me, and you don't have to like me, but you have to protect my rights afforded to me by the Supreme Court. I will no longer be attacked or forced to comply with the wants of this failing tyrannical government. I call for the equal protections of all citizens when I ask council to protect the future voters and taxpayers of this city from the assaults of bad Beaumont Police Department officers. That's when the onslaught from the city departments began. When we have officers, we have great officers that have to work besides, on the side next to bad officers that abuse our citizens. Help protect our great officers and the citizens of Beaumont by voting to release body worn camera videos to the public through the Open Records Act. I'm calling for council to step up and protect the citizens equally from the tyrannical administration. And if you don't vote on this immediately, you have three days to comply. By February 24th, I'm asking you to step down. By February twenty-fourth, I'm asking you to step down if you do not vote for this. You all need to go if there, you all need to go if you continue to not to protect our citizens, and I will not stop calling for the protection of our citizens against this administration and the Beaumont Police Department regardless on what is brought against me. Council fellow shall just stated in a previous comment that a person might consider something as art while another considers it as trash. We cannot continue to pick and choose Supreme Court rulings, which ones they apply to, which individuals in this community. That's why I'm running for mayor for the city.
Okay, we can't campaign in council chambers?
There's nothing against state law, it says I can't.
But also for clarification to that statement, Mayor, if I may, I never said it was a Supreme Court ruling, I said a ruling from a higher court. Also, there has been no civil action taken against Mr. Eller and his property. The properties that he is referring to sought to have their property, at least one of the properties sought to have the property designated as a museum, and that is also a right that is available to any citizen in Beaumont, they so choose. At such time, if there is civil action taken against any properties in Beaumont, Mr. Eller's property included, he will have a right to be properly heard in a court of law.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon to Mr. Williams, Mayor, City Council, Leo, and those that are supporters. I'm standing here today because I just need a question answered, or some questions. One is the open-ended amount that our legislative consultant has. I was reading the packet and I saw a hundred thousand, and then there was some other areas that will be payment. So is this kind of a, you know, whatever the cost is, you pay? I know that other awards have money dollar certain amounts. The other thing is, we do have Honorable Chris Manuel and Speaker of the House Dade Phelan at the state level. So I was trying to figure out what is the justification to pay a consultant to give you information that you could get off of the internet or get from those two key individuals that we voted in to represent this area. The other thing is fluoride was discussed last time, and it was suggested that it be put on the ballot, it was taken off, or it was never, it never went. But I've never heard anybody say anything about, you represent us, but what about putting it on the ballot as an initiative coming up May? You know, we have this election, so it seemed like a big deal, so before you go and spend a whole lot of money, why don't you know something from us and how we feel? The other thing is, I heard you vote for this legislative Golden Days, but seem like I surmise that you only changed the Battleship Texas from three position to eleven position. It's still on there, the wording is still there. I don't get it. And as far as the water, and I, I've talked about water a long time ago, we had an eight percent increase, I think, we went to the highest level, and then we had a contingency fund for the water. And now you're gonna charge the people that have eight percent increase in water and charge them to pay their bill. So I'm a senior citizen, I have a checking account, some people don't. I'm a senior citizen, I can walk a little bit, but some people can't come up here to pay their bill. So now it looks like you're imposing from October, when we had a long discussion about water and increased it, and from October to March, I guess, and we're just early into the funding, we got another increase that we're looking at. Thank you for your service, thank you for your listening here, and God bless each of you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Now's the time for council member comment, and I will start with you, Mayor Protim Duria.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate Councilman Samuel on your proclamation earlier. You've been a big help for me since I've been on here, somebody I can look up to, and just thank you for your service. Also, I told Barton earlier, thank y'all for getting started on Sarah Street, really appreciate it. Really enjoyed Mardi Gras, took my twin granddaughters out there Sunday, and they had a blast. Staff done a, they done a great job on that Mardi Gras. Also, Todd and Mike, thank y'all for your presentation, very quality, wish it was a little shorter, but that's. And Miles, thank you and your staff. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Turner, I don't think I have thanked you for what you've done with our Youth Advisory Council, since you've become liaison, you took them under your wing, and I think you took them out of town on a trip, and I know that they are growing and appreciating all of it, so thank you for doing that. To the council as a whole, thank you for voting to approve a dog park at Rogers Park. Currently, there are two thousand eight hundred and twenty people that have signed a petition asking for this, and so it's, it's not Mike Getz's Dog Park, but it's, it's a dog park for the citizens that will so choose to utilize it. One of the things that I've come to learn about dog parks is that it's not really for the dogs, it's for the people to be able to come and exercise their dogs and interact amongst each other, they have commonality, they have canine friends. I remember when Holly Peterson first started this four years ago, she would have liked to have been here today to see this vote and, and to speak on it. She's worked, she works for Gift of Life, and she's right in the middle of preparing for champagne and ribs. So she sent an email, I'm not gonna read the whole email, but I did pass out a copy of it to all of you, and I didn't ask her to write any of this, this is, this is her words, but she put a PS on there that I hope you pay attention to because that would be, that would be very, very special, and so please pay attention to her PS, and thank you again for passing this.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
I just had a question about our event center, maybe I can get this information. When citizens book it, do citizens in Beaumont pay the same amount as outsiders? Would it be in kind of booked at capacity for a year or two years? I just want to know if, since we built it for the citizens of Beaumont, are our citizens paying the same amount as maybe an outsider? And can we kind of look into that? Another thing is, before I go any further, I do want to congratulate Councilmember Samuel, like appreciate the service. I remember when I talked about running in twenty nineteen, and you gave me some pretty tough advice, you told me, either gonna stay on the sideline, or you gonna get in the game, and even have it turn out, if it don't go your way, if you really want it, come back and get it again. So I remember that conversation, I want to just congratulate you on your service, and Mayor, thank you for doing that for him, that means a lot. And Mike, appreciate the acknowledgement of the U Council, I appreciate that as well. And I kind of, before I even go to my next comment, this is just a testament of the direction that our council has been going in since I've been on the council. I think it's pretty refreshing, and I think the community sees it, you know, even when I'm out in the community, people are always complimenting us on the ability that we can actually agree to disagree, work together like adults, and still move forward and get things done. So the whole council, I appreciate y'all for that. But now to my second comment, we're discussing water rates and fees and things of that magnitude, and I understand things go up and we have to talk about these things, but I really would like to see staff, or maybe Mr. Williams, y'all come together and put us a pretty aggressive plan together to be proactive and get in front of our rainwater infiltrating our sewer water system. Because to my understanding, our trail park is the place that everything flows to, and it's not full to capacity, but the reality is, we got so much infiltration, when the stormwater gets in our system, it's backing up in people's homes, and I really want to see an aggressive proactive plan to address that, and I'm more than confident that y'all can get that to us. And lastly, Taste of the Triangle today, I don't know how long we're gonna be in executive session, I don't know if we're gonna be able to make it, but I encourage everybody to, well, I can't say go support because it's sold out, I've been getting messages, can I get them tickets, but it's sold out, so maybe it's just another testament that we had a good Mardi Gras weekend, we have a good Mural Fest coming up, we got some great events going in Beaumont, and as you can see, the community is enjoying, you can see the line outside the building, as we kind of look from the council chamber, so hopefully don't eat all the food before we get out of executive session. But Ms. Danielle, I appreciate you coming today, I know it's your first meeting, we're glad to have you, we thank you for coming, and everybody else who continues to come, we thank you for coming. And I agree with you, I can't wait to see the park plan moving forward with some of the things Mr. Williams brought up, to where we can get a lot more community engagement. And I appreciate you coming and staying there because I think we've been trying to move in that direction, and we're getting a lot of good positive feedback from it, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Velschel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just congratulations to Councilman Samuel, his recognition and his many years of service. And I understand Mardi Gras was a great success, I was out of town on vacation with my family that was set months ago and involved a group of people, and just couldn't change that, but I understand it was a great success, and I'm just sorry that I missed it. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Randy, Snupthug, and PowWow asked about you too.
Who? Snug pal?
We'll talk about it later, man, we'll talk about it later.
It's all you, brother.
They actually did that.
Councilmember Samuel.
I'd just say thank you, I'm humbled by the recognition. This whole job is not for recognition, it's to serve, and I enjoy that, so I appreciate the recognition. That's all.
Ms. Reed.
Well, this past Sunday, I had the opportunity to fellowship at Paradise Baptist Church, and I would just like to say thank you to the Fat Youth Ministry and Pastor and First Lady Abe Cobright for honoring me, myself, myself, I think Dr. Allen, as well as our city manager in their Black History Program. It was beautiful to see the kids basically running the service and all the history and preparation that they put into doing the presentation, so thank you for the invitation, Mayor.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd too like to congratulate Councilmember Samuel for your dedication and hard work of all the years. I know it hasn't been easy, and it's definitely not easy, but you persevered, so, so you're the better for it, for doing that. Likewise, I'd like to compliment the mayor and working on the TERP project with Damon West, and that's a really feel-good story, that's a great thing to bring to Beaumont, so I look forward to that growing in the future as that takes place. I experienced my first Mardi Gras, and I'm the better for it too. But it was a real pleasure, I really got a lot of satisfaction in interacting with the community and with the people here, and it made me feel really, really good about it too, in doing it, so now I know how to properly toss a chicken and, and participate in parades at night, so I really thank Southeast Texas group for that, and Mayor for coaching me on throwing a chicken, so I appreciate it. A couple of, a little more serious stuff, the strategic plan, you've, you've probably already been contacted, if not, you'll soon be contacted by Lyle Sumick with, with Lyle Sumick and Associates on the strategic plan, they're going through the part of interviewing each of you remotely and getting your input. He said, things are really going well, he's getting great input, good participation from the council, and also staff is submitting there, he's got sheets for them to fill out. It's gonna be big that we, March sixth and seventh, I know it's gonna be time-consuming for you, but it's gonna really be important for you to participate, it's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna be the meat of the document to help shape Beaumont into the future. So I know you're busy, but anytime you can dedicate to those meetings, one, part of it will be a part of the council meeting on the seventh, I think, so it's not two full days, so that's important. Also received news on the economic development plan, we're getting RFPs on that, the chamber is, and so they'll be coming to you really soon about updating you on that and what it takes to finance that, that plan. Then lastly, Sheray's office has done a great job in getting a driving policy done and out, so we now have that and execute it, and they are going and educating departments and employees, and we look forward to that, so thanks Sheray and Marissa Arsenault, Arsenault, for the work that they've done on that, and we look for that to pay real dividends for the city in the future. That's all I have, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Boone?
Sure.
Mr. Barkoviat?
Congratulations to Councilman Samuel, I've really enjoyed working with you over the years, look forward to working with you going forward.
Ms. Semino?
Mayor, I enjoyed the way you surprised Councilman Samuel with that proclamation, it was, it was actually heartwarming to see his reaction, and Councilman Samuel, it's, to me, it's obviously you have a servant's heart with this, and I have deep admiration for your decades of service, so thank you.
And our city clerk, Ms. Resart.
Congratulations, Councilmember Samuel, I shed tears with you as well.
Thank you. Well, I would like to say congratulations to Councilmember Samuel. Well deserved, when you spend that many years in public service and dedication. People think we just come to a city council meeting on Tuesday. We're, we're council people pretty much twenty-four seven, everywhere we go, even during COVID with a mask and glasses on, I think they spot out your walk. You're, you're just servants to citizens, and if your heart is truly in it, you love it, and you do it, and you do it because you have a servant's heart, and that's what I've witnessed for the past seven years, and I've enjoyed working with you, Odwin, when we're out of town and on, on, on different committees, I've just seen things put into place, and a lot of things that people benefit from today right here in Beaumont has come from some of the efforts that you've done. So again, thank you and congratulations, it's an honor well deserved. We will not have a meeting next Tuesday because every elected official, every director, most county officials will all be in Austin, Texas for Golden Triangle Days, and this is the entire triangle where we go before our state reps, and of course, Beaumont will be seeking out our, the Speaker of the House, who is our representative for the entire state, but a Beaumont resident, and to pass some of the things that we've talked about in our legislative agenda. This happens every other year, and I don't think we've gone, we didn't go during COVID, so we haven't been, I think, in the last three and a half years because we missed during COVID. But things that are voted on, on the House floor by the state reps, those are some of the things that we were discussing today. So when you hear Golden Triangle Days, that's pretty much what the Golden Triangle Days are, and it's work, it's, it's not a fun trip because you're walking, oh boy, a lot of walking. You don't wear heels there, I mean, you're in some tennis shoes.
You better not wear no heels.
Well, y'all don't anyway, but, I mean, you're dropped off from here and you're walking almost to the, the event. Yeah, well, y'all don't anyway, but, I mean, you're dropped off from here and you're walking almost to the, the event center. But, um, it's work that, uh, again, that we're committed to doing. And, um, that's what we do to represent our city and our constituency. I would also like to say, of course, the Taste of the Triangle, you see the line is there, started at five-thirty. Um, we probably won't be getting there because we have executive session after this. And, um, but it's part of the job. Also, staff, thank you so very much for great presentations today. Um, we noticed that we have a lot of savings to look forward to. And, um, there were some questions, um, at the podium about charges. Uh, if I slip on one bill and I need to get it in before a, a, a past due or a late fee, that there is a twenty-dollar phone charge. So, the charge that was presented today is only if you make a payment with your debit or credit card. Um, there's a fee associated with it, and we have picked up that fee all of the years. And we have not charged the consumer, being the citizen who's using that card for those fees. And so, there's nowhere that you can make a phone credit card payment and not charge, be charged a fee. And so, for us to not have done it, for as long as we have not done it, I think there are some things that have just been founded in our system that we're just coming up to par, pretty much with everyone else. And, um, another statement, uh, on last week about the fluoride, uh, putting it on the ballot. I just believe that we use, uh, the information from experts that came and spoke on the reasons why it should be. And then, I would think to leave it to the hands of the public who's not educated in that area to make that decision for every citizen. Um, it's part of the reason the vote went the way that it did on last week. There was a vote that was taken last week as to, should it, should the fluoride stay or should it be removed? And there was a map that was provided that showed one area where it was really needed versus another area that had it and was concerned about removing it. And so, the vote took place, and that was the result of the vote. Um, also, um, Paradise Church had an amazing youth Black History Program on last week, on last Sunday, that honored, um, Ms. Sheree Reed, our city attorney, our city manager, the school superintendent, and myself. And, uh, as, uh, Ms. Reed said, it was truly, truly an amazing program. And usually on Youth Sunday, um, the word comes from the youth. Uh, all of the ushers, the collection of money, everything is done by the youth. And, uh, as you could tell, we have some pretty talented youth, amazing youth. That's the future. And so, um, March fourth is West End Little League Baseball Opening Day. And, uh, West End Baseball has been there forever. And so, please come out and support West End Little League, uh, next Saturday, March fourth. Not this coming Saturday, but Saturday, March fourth. And that concludes, um, today's agenda. Thank you for coming, go out and spread the love. Thank you.